Welcome to this day Tuesday, February 27, 2018. This is your Delnart County Board of Supervisors meeting. And appreciate you all being here in a nice sunny but cold day in Crescent City. We're going to get started with our regular session. Liz, is there anything to report out of closed session?
No reportable action.
Thank you very much. I'd like to pause briefly for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Supervisor Hemmings, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have any new employees to introduce today? Guess we do not. So in that case, I'd like to go ahead and move forward with the consent agenda at this time, which is items five through nine listed on your agenda. And oh, thank you. Supervisor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Public comment on consent agenda items only. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Burkletz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmings?
Yes.
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard.
Yes. And within that consent agenda, which was item number seven, we do have a proclamation today. And I'll go ahead and read that. And this is a proclamation of Professional Social Work Month, March 2018. Whereas for the past 100 years, social workers have helped America's leaders weave the nation's social safety net. It is not surprising that social work is currently one of the fastest growing professions in the United States, with social workers employed by many different organizations and industries, including private and public agencies, hospice, hospitals, schools, universities, businesses, and foundations, military branches, and venture centers, as well as the national and public elected offices. Whereas, an everyday social worker addresses the emotional, psychological, economic, and/or physical needs of millions of people. And whereas, the social work profession creates pathways to full participation in society, and the primary mission of a social worker is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable. And whereas, social workers create the courage, strength, and determination of human spirit while working to empower others to hope, dream, and believe in their own potential, so that their families can be reunited, and elders and/or dependents, adults, can be self-sufficient. Whereas, in Delnart County, social workers help the parents with an average of 150 children each month, and 15 adult and/or dependent adults to use their strengths, resilience, and self-advocacy to navigate life's challenges, and also help function better in their environments, improve their relations with others, and solve personal and family problems through a wide range of psychological services. Now therefore it be resolved, the Delnart County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as Professional Social Work Month, in recognition of social workers and their commitment and dedication to individuals, families, and community of Delnart County, and call upon all citizens and observants and support of social workers. Passed and adopted this day, the 27th day of February 2018. Do we have anybody here to receive this proclamation today? Excellent.
Thank you for recognizing March as Social Work Month, Professional Social Worker Month. This is very meaningful. As you all know, social workers have a difficult job to do, and it's very valuable to have the support of the board and of administration for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can briefly, hi. And I would like some of, we have some of our social workers here with us today, and I'd like them to stand, as we honor them. Some of them could not be here today. And then we would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for honoring us, and for our social workers for the hard work and dedication we do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll just add briefly, before we move to public comment, that, you know, I've had the opportunity to interact with social workers this last year and this year, specific to a case in my employment. And the resolve, in this case, through the Mental Health Department, to support the issues that were being experienced by some employees, was incredible, down to the personal nature of it and the responsiveness to address the need. And this has been going on for years, but I cannot thank mental health enough, or the perseverance of social work to help address these issues in our community, because it's not just individuals that are affected, it's, everybody is affected by these issues. And we appreciate your perseverance and strength to help those suffering get through their illnesses. Again, appreciate it, and continue on this month in recognition from the Delnart County Board of Supervisors. All right, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment at this time, which is our 10:05 timed item. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Do we have public comment this morning? Please. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Linda Center for Fifth District. I'd like to adopt an approval proclamation declaring March as our National Supervisor Clown Day. Recognize that the five clowns who sit before us do their best to entertain the county by their lack of leadership and indecisiveness. Everyone give them a clap. Thank you.
Good morning, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm an IHSS worker, and...
Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm Teresa Schnacker.
Thanks, Teresa.
I'm a caregiver of my son, who is 31, who is developmentally delayed and has seizures. And I take care of him 24 hours a day for 11 bucks an hour, which is, you know, not much to, the wages doesn't cover basic living costs. And the vast majority of the funds are used for IHS come from federal and state sources, such as increasing wages to IHS workers in, or will impact and inject new money to Delnart County's economy. An increase in wages benefits would have a positive economic impact across Delnart County with those extra federal and state funds being spent in local stores across our community, helping small businesses and supporting jobs. And the 65-plus population of Delnart County is expected to crease from 4,975 to 6,290 by 2030. This represents a 26% increase that will increase the demand for supportive services, which we also work with the great people behind me and stuff, but I appreciate your time and patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Public comment. Good morning.
Good morning again. I'm Craig Swanson, IHSS worker. I've been with you before, still pleading our case. I work 60 to 64 hours a week, giving care to individuals. And I live from paycheck to paycheck, because the wages, minimum wage, and there are no benefits. I have to pay for the benefits out of my own pocket. Delnart County currently is facing a shortage of people who do my work. I get calls all the time from clients who want me to help them find a caregiver. They've been authorized by social services, which you guys do great work in supporting us. We really appreciate the social services here in Delnart County. And as the other lady said, in the future, very near future, we're going to have a 26% increase in the aged population needing our care. And so, to attract people into this profession, there has to be something more than just the minimum wage, because right now, without all the physical work I do, changing diapers and doing laundry and stuff, I could get a minimum wage job at McDonald's. It's a whole lot easier than the care I give people. So think about that as human beings. If you were having to do my work, would you do it just for minimum wage and nothing else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, Board. I'm Phoebe Lenhardt. I'm a resident of Delnart County and a taxpayer of Delnart County. And one brief comment, I'm unable to stay for your entire meeting today. I just want to make sure that you're aware of a deadline, and a deadline is approaching, according to the county clerk's office, for any legislation to appear on the November ballot. It must be submitted to the county clerk's office by June 28. That's about four months from now. And I'm saying this in particular in regard to a certain item number 13 that is on the agenda today. If there cannot be some kind of legislation brought forth for the November ballot, and there needs to be a special election, it will cost the taxpayers of Delnart County a minimum of $20,000 to $28,000. So if a June 28 deadline is not met, and there becomes a later need for a popular election in the county, keep in mind, it will cost $20,000 to $28,000. I can see where that money can be used in so many ways in this community, and frankly, I would not be very happy if legislation is not done in time, in a timely manner, for it to appear on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Phoebe. Any other public comment this morning? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board at this time. And, oop, sorry. If there's anybody else, if you can just please be ready, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Patty Hanks.
Nice to meet you.
And I'm here as a recovering addict and alcoholic of 27 years. I now use marijuana cream. I have severe arthritis in my lower back, and I have to travel to get my cream. To ban this drug is ridiculous. It's the most unheard of thing. I mean, I read the paper, I listen to the people on the internet, and everybody says the same thing. You're not listening to us. You're making your decision, but you're not listening to the public. You know, I was a counselor for years also, alcohol and drugs. I know what it's like out there. I see the same people everybody else sees, that are up on heroin and crack and everything else. But marijuana is a medical thing, and it's a medical thing for me. I got put on oxycodone, which I became addicted to and stopped. I had ablazion treatments on my lower back, where they enter in and burn the nerves in my lower back, and nothing has worked, like the marijuana cream works right now. And it gives me relief and enables me to walk, and just stand and do things that I have to do. So I'm begging you guys, I don't know where your heads are, but this is not a bad thing, and it's a thing that's going to bring money to this county. So I don't know why you're so against it. Mr. Gattan, I heard you. You are totally, mm. And I wish you had a problem where you couldn't take oxycodone or some kind of painkiller because of the addiction, and you had to resort to marijuana cream. I really wish you would give it a second thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. I know we have several timed agenda items on the agenda today, but for those that are here for that discussion, which is item 13 is, as was indicated, I'll try to do my best to move that up on the agenda, because I know there's a lot of folks here that are here to talk about that item specifically. Any other public comment this morning? Okay, we're going to go ahead and pull public comment and move to item number 10. Sorry, it's 10:15. I didn't look at the clock. We're, let's go ahead and move to our 10:15 timed agenda item, which is approve and authorize the chair to sign the attached letter opposing SB 831, and receive a presentation from the Community Development Department regarding recently enacted housing law, specifically accessory dwelling units, as requested by Chair Howard. I think Mr. Hooper is here with us today to make that presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think we're just going to wait a second for the presentation to get pulled up to your screens, real quick, hopefully. Okay, there it is. Well, thank you Chair Howard. Members of the board, good morning. My name is Randy Hooper. I am the Assistant Director of the County's Community Development Department. This presentation was requested by Chair Howard. I understand he has a very busy agenda this morning, so I'll try and get through it as quick as I can. But I think it is a significant issue that we've previously discussed here with the board, and did generate some interest from the public, that we've certainly been hearing from at the Community Development Department counter. So we'll just jump right into it. Just as an overview, in December, CDD introduced a draft ordinance to the board. That ordinance would have provided some regulatory controls over the issue of accessory dwelling units. It was fairly clear, I think, from that presentation in December, however, that the board was displeased with the direction that we were getting from the state, which essentially was a requirement from the state to permit this new form of secondary housing referred to as an accessory dwelling unit as a principally permitted or a ministerial use. So based on that presentation, staff did receive direction to examine essentially alternative ways that reasonable restrictions could be included at the local level that were tailored to our community and reflected the priorities and values that this community has. Since that time, in January of this year's last month, a new bill was introduced in the Senate. This is SB 831, which if it's approved, would really further exacerbate many of the issues that we identified as part of this ADU issue here at the local level. And so, from that perspective, essentially, the approach of staff has been not to bring the ordinance back to the board, but to look into the specific issue of this new piece of legislation, and do further refinements to the ordinances as necessary. Just as some background on this issue, affordable housing is certainly an issue on a statewide basis. Many, many areas throughout the state are struggling with affordable housing, and to some degree, we are here too as well. Utilizing secondary residential units as a policy tool has been something that the state has long utilized in their approach to resolving this issue. The legislature in particular, through the housing law, and now even more specifically through this accessory dwelling unit law, is utilizing this approach again to address what they perceive as really a government failure in policy, as opposed to a market failure. They really put the blame at the door, or at the foot of local government, which, we'll get into some of the details on that here in a little bit. But they don't, in a lot of ways, take into account some of the other market issues, I think, and again, what some local governments are doing to meet that affordable housing need within their communities. But in response to all these issues, the legislature has passed several bills, which are intended to reduce what they consider to be barriers to the creation of this new housing, again principally at the local level. Going back to the 80s and 90s, there have been various pieces of legislation that have come forward to address this issue. However, more recently, in 2003, there was a piece of legislation, AB 1866, which is really kind of the genesis of this ADU issue, in terms of considering residential second units as a ministerial use rather than discretionary use. And I should point out, maybe for the benefit of the public, that ministerial uses are uses that are essentially allowed without any discretionary review, meaning they wouldn't have to go to the Planning Commission, they wouldn't come to the Board of Supervisors, they would be just permits that would be typically issued at the Building Department. So again, those 2003 changes to the housing law are certainly the genesis of this new ADU issue, and they're also the basis for our existing county law, our county ordinance that has to do with residential second units. And so specifically within our non-coastal areas, the 2003 legislation led to the modification of our local county code, which does permit second units as a principally permitted use, assuming they meet some basic parameters. And those parameters would essentially be that the property retains its ability to be subdivided. So if you have a two-acre parcel, and you desire to put a second residence on the property, you would need to be in an area that's owned for one acre minimum parcel sizes. If you were in an area that was owned for two acre minimum parcel sizes, you wouldn't be able to accomplish compliance with the existing county code. Interestingly, the coastal zoning code doesn't reflect those 2003 statutory changes, and it's my opinion that that essentially reflects the difficulties in amending local coastal policy. So in 2016, a packet of bills, three bills, SB 1069, AB 2299, and AB 2406, were introduced in the legislatures. They collectively require the local agencies approve this redefined form of secondary housing, now referred to as an accessory dwelling unit. And again, this would be applicable in all, in all areas that are zoned for residential uses. The laws were signed into law by the governor in late 2016, and went into effect on January 1st, 2017. And so these laws have been on the books for the better part of the last year plus. We haven't really seen too much in the way of activity on ADUs despite the law being in place. We've received a handful of applications, and based on the statute, they've had to be approved. But we have received quite a few inquiries. So again, the key differences in how ADUs are now treated relative to how residential secondary uses were previously treated, is that, among other things, residentially zoned parcels must now be ministerially permitted to be developed with ADU if so requested. We do have a number of concerns, obviously, with the state law in this case, and I think the board expressed a number of their concerns in December, and I'd certainly be interested in hearing more of that, so we can further craft our local ordinance. But principally, local zoning is considered one of the police powers that is granted to local government, and the overarching theory behind zoning power is that land is regulated for the good of the community as a whole. And more specifically, cities and counties can use that zoning power to implement the long-range plans, or the general plans, that are adopted by each of the local legislative bodies, in this case, the Board of Supervisors. And I think it's important to point out that this process is highly public, and doesn't involve a high degree of public participation. So the ADU laws, in many regards, effectively remove a large degree of that local control. They do that, in this case, by requiring that local governments essentially overlook many of the policies and programs that are identified in their local general plans. And I just have a couple examples here. A community may have a general plan designating a certain area to allow for one residence per one acre, and again, kind of reiterating on the point that I made earlier, under this new ADU law, that's a policy that we would have to overlook when issuing a permit. Getting into some of the rural concerns on this particular issue, oftentimes, particularly in rural areas, lower densities are established as part of the general plan land use element due to a lack of available public utilities, or to preserve the rural nature of neighborhoods and communities. There are negative consequences that could obviously come along with this as well with respect to the environment. High concentrations of onsite public utilities, particularly onsite wastewater treatment systems and onsite wells, have at least two undesirable and pretty obvious effects. Overconcentrations of septic systems can lead to contamination of groundwater and other surface water and environmental resources. And overconcentrations of onsite wells can lead to overpumping of groundwater resources, and in coastal areas like ours, potential intrusion of seawater into the aquifers. So, kind of bringing this forward, in order to comply with the new ADU statutes, again, we prepared several draft ordinances. Those were taken to the Planning Commission. They were introduced before the Board of Supervisors. And there's very limited ways that, from a local perspective, we can control this issue, but there are certain reasonable restrictions that we did include as part of that local draft ordinance that was put together. But in terms of allowances, the draft ADU ordinances would allow for the creation of either detached or attached accessory dwelling units. Obviously, a detached accessory dwelling unit might be a small cabin, or actually up to 1,200 square foot residents located somewhere on the property. An attached accessory dwelling unit might be the conversion of space within a garage or an existing shop, specifically for this purpose. And again, under the draft ordinances, an ADU may be constructed upon any residentially zoned parcel, or the designation of an existing residence as an ADU, if a new primary residence is proposed, kind of swapping one for the other in that case, which, again, that would be a reasonable restriction that we could, we could weigh in on if we chose to. However, after researching the options for, for those reasonable restrictions, it's pretty obvious that, under the statute, the options are going to be very limited, and in no case, the county could prohibit accessory dwelling units as a local, a local ordinance. It is something that we're going to, we're going to have to update to meet this requirement. Those restrictions that I spoke to a second ago, that we were proposing to include in the draft, would be up to 1,200 square feet in terms of size limitation for a detached accessory dwelling unit, or 50% of the living space for an attached accessory dwelling unit with a 16-foot height limitation. Another proposal the staff put forward that was debated by the Planning Commission, was whether detached accessory dwelling units should be permitted to be constructed within high and very high fire hazard severity zones. That's something that, from the staff perspective, we feel very strongly about. We don't think that overconcentrations of these types of structures in high and very high fire hazard severity zones should be something that we should support, but ultimately, that'll be the board's decision. And a stipulation that was mutually agreed upon by the Planning Commission and staff, was that either the ADU or the principal residence could be inhabited, or should be inhabited by the property owner. In some cases, certain jurisdictions are requiring a tenancy requirement. We feel that's appropriate in order to keep the character of residential neighborhoods So the big complication at this point is this new Senate bill that's been introduced, SB 831. This was introduced by Senator Wykowski of Fremont. Senator Wykowski has proven to be a champion of ADUs and actually wrote one of the previous bills that's now part of the ADU law, and so this continues to be something that he promotes. And in terms of the complications that it presents, it really strips away a lot of the local control or the minimal amount of local control that we preserve on this issue from the previous ADU laws, but specifically, it requires that ADUs be permitted in any zone district. So we're getting beyond just residentially zoned areas. Now we're talking agricultural areas, commercial areas, anywhere. Another impact that this would certainly have on local government would be that the bill, if it's enacted, would eliminate the ability of local government and local agencies from collecting any impact fees, connection fees, capacity charges, as well as any other fees that might be levied by school districts, utility companies. These would be things like school mitigation fees that are currently paid for new residential construction to offset the cost to the school district for more people in the district. You know, the way the law reads or the proposal reads is that it would be all fees. Another implication, at least from the perspective of community development department that we're concerned about, would be that applications need to be acted upon within 120 days of receipt, and if they're failed to be acted upon within 120 days, they're deemed approved. And again, I think this goes back to some of the issues that you might see in urban areas, you know, where permits can take years, I understand, to be processed. So I don't think, you know, all the stipulations in the law are bad in their intent, I just think that there's a misapplication here in a lot of cases. And the letter, I think, speaks to the one-size-fits-all problems associated with this particular approach. To kind of wrap this all up, it is staff's opinion that the legislature has really overreacted to the shortage of affordable housing and has failed to consider other factors that could influence the supply of affordable housing here in California, and a couple obvious examples of that would be existing environmental laws, which are some of the most stringent nationwide here in California. You have coastal commission considerations, you have land values, which again, here in California are going to be, you know, higher than anywhere else in the country, and the cost of labor. Whenever you pull a permit, as a contractor, there's, you know, liability insurance that needs to be carried. The cost of labor is not something, I think, to overlook when you talk about the supply of affordable housing in California. The approach taken by the legislature reflects a very urban viewpoint, and this disproportionately burdens rural communities who already struggle to provide services to their communities, given the more generally limited tax base and economic activities present in rural areas. Addressing housing shortages, in our view, would be better done at a regional or local level rather than imposing this one-size-fits-all statewide requirement. The county should certainly adopt an ADU ordinance rather than leave this to the state's control, and in doing so, you know, might preserve some degree of that local authority. However, it is going to be limited, I guess, to emphasize that point. We do think that it would be important to send this letter to Senator Wykowski's office as well as CSAC and RCRC, just so they understand this more rural viewpoint and the impacts that would come along with this from a rural perspective. And again, you know, this is an issue of, you know, concern to the community in the sense that it speaks to the issue of affordable housing, which is certainly something we want to promote, but there are implications. The double's always in the details, and I think that's the case here. Sorry for the length of that presentation. If there's any questions after all that, I would certainly be happy to try and address those.
We appreciate that, Randy. It is a fairly complicated issue, and I think you spelled it out quite clearly that the impacts, although the bill's basically being written for that urban suburban environment where there are some housing shortage needs, when they become, when there becomes legislation that affects rural communities, more importantly, taking away our local control, that it impacts our zoning and our ordinance that we've designed over the last number of years to specifically maintain the beauty of this environment, it's a far-reaching impact that I think absolutely we need to oppose. But definitely appreciate all your efforts in trying to pull this together. I know it is a complicated issue, and having spoken to both Assemblyman Wood and Senator McGuire on this issue, they're absolutely opposed to it. It's great that our senators are on board, but they are rural folks, and of course, if they could do anything to offset that impact with some exemptions into this legislation, they certainly will, and I think this letter will serve that purpose to show the support at least they're getting from Delmar County. Any comments from the board?
Randy, what would this do with the normal 60-by-120 lot that has like 25-foot setbacks on the front and 10-foot on the sides? Are those going to go away under this legislation?
No, the parcels would remain unaffected. The question would be how the parcels would be developed, and in this case, where we're typically used to seeing a single-family residence developed on one of these 60-by-120 parcels, now there would be the opportunity to develop that principally permitted residence and a second, up to 1,200 square foot, second residence.
But where would that go if we already have all of the setbacks occupied by our own?
There would potentially be a squeeze, but that would be up to the individual developer to make that work. They would be entitled to that second residence or the ADU, but again, it could be, you know, they may not be able to get a full 1,200 square foot structure in addition to what they already have there. There are some ways that setbacks are relaxed under the ADU requirement, and so under our local zoning, where you might have a 10-foot, say, side or rear property line setback, the ADU may not be held at that same standard under the state law. It might be a reduced setback down to, you know, five feet or less potentially.
Okay. Thank you, Randy.
Sure.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions? Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, thank you, Randy. Excellent presentation. I just, to be clear on your conclusion, staff recommends a letter, and I'd like to, just to be clear on this, a letter of opposition. It doesn't say that here. Authorized to be transmitted to Senator Wykowski. But coming back to a local ordinance, what would you see as some of the bullet points of a local ordinance on ADUs?
Well, again, I think a couple of those were included in the presentation, you know, the up to 50% of the existing living space for an attached, up to 1,200 square feet for a detached, up to 16 feet in height, the restriction within the high and very high fire hazard severities zones for the detached. This is something that I've looked at, other staff at our department have looked at, I've talked to Joel Campbell from county council's office, he's looked into limitations on how far we could deviate from the state law. It's kind of our collective consensus that we can't really deviate too far, and the further out we get in deviating from the state law, the more circumspect our approach is probably going to be, and we're potentially subject to litigation if it were pursued.
And again, just to include the component of the, in the coastal zone, all of these developments would be subject to coastal commission purview, is that correct?
To some degree. The statute requires that the approval be ministerial. Typically coastal permits are discretionary, meaning they go to the planning commission, they're appealable to the California Coastal Commission. A project approved within an appeals area in the coastal zone, based on feedback from the coastal commission, will still be processed as a coastal development permit, but it wouldn't be the typical approach of having to go to the planning commission and potentially the board of supervisors and the coastal commission. It would just be called a coastal development permit with some notification to the coastal commission of the approval. Good question.
Yeah, to briefly address Supervisor Gitlin's comments, specific to the opposition piece, the last paragraph, "For reasons expressed herein, this board is opposed to SB 831 and requests that you reconsider the approach to public policy would impose unreasonable requirements on local governments, particularly in rural communities and local agencies." So I'm hoping that addresses your concern. Supervisor Callen?
I just want to say thank you very much for all your work on this. You know, it is an issue. This is a perfect example of the state having control. You know, it's another issue we're facing later in this meeting, but we give the state control, and they're not doing what's best for Delmar County. I have already dealt with this with a constituent and a friend who had something pop up right outside our kitchen window, and there was nothing we could do about it. And that's not okay. And, you know, the reason for our local ordinances and our local control is to make sure we do what's best for Delmar County and not let the state get involved. And, you know, here the state's involved, and it's been a disaster, and, well, in my opinion, it has not been a good thing. And as a realtor, it has not been a good thing, in my opinion. So I appreciate all your hard work, and hopefully we can do something to, you know, stop any further layer of control from the state on this.
Thank you again, Randy. Let's go ahead and open it up to public comment on agenda item two. Do we have public comment today? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Hendrick. I live in District Five. I just came back from San Diego Democratic Convention. I've made it my mission since we defeated the state of Jefferson here to raise awareness with our urban legislators so that they're more aware of the challenges that rural counties, rural communities face. And I've never seen so much support and awareness for rural counties than this convention that I just came back from. In fact, the state party just adopted a rural plank for the first time ever as part of the state platform. And one of the central, one of the first bullet points in the rural plank is one that we submitted from this county that I've been thinking about for a long time, is that when legislation is proposed, they should ask two questions. Will this work? And is it fair in rural communities? So that's now officially part of the platform. On Sunday, I had the pleasure of having breakfast with Tony Atkins, who's the incoming Senate president. I've gotten to know Kevin DeLeon over the last year. He's running for something. And every time I meet with these people, I talk to them about rural issues. When I met the incoming Senate president, Tony Atkins, she said she grew up in rural Virginia. She understands rural issues. So I don't want to have you give up on trying to make this legislation work. Opposing it seems like the right step. It is a perfect example of how urban legislators intending to do something right for their community don't think. It's not that they don't like us, I'm sure of that. They just don't think, they don't know. So we can really help, and I'm happy, as far as my role as the Chair of the County Democratic Party, I really actually know these people, and I know they want to help us. So for one, I would add copies to both of the Senate presidents, the current Senator DeLeon and the incoming Tony Atkins. And let's try to highlight that, bring that to their attention. They're running those bodies. Kevin DeLeon, I think, is stepping down next month or soon, but I think they're really going to listen to what you have to say. You're making reasonable points, and they don't think about septic systems. I do. You know, I think about overdevelopment and the impact on my groundwater. It's something that really has to be well-planned, and when you start overloading a district, an area, there's really specific things that have to be considered, and I'm comfortable that our planning department will do that, and I think having more local control is appropriate. I don't know why I'm so optimistic. The Democratic Convention always makes me believe things are possible. So that's my message to you. I'll help any way I can, and I actually have a good relationship with these people, so I'm happy to work with you, Chris, and let's do some lobbying, make this better.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Any other public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion from the board at this time?
I make a motion to approve the letter to be sent.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Kylie, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkwitz?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Hooper, if you could consider addition of a couple more CCs on that, as was suggested, I think that might be helpful. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to go ahead and move forward with our 10:25 timed agenda item, which is adjourned as the board supervisors and reconvene as the Board of Equalization and conduct a public hearing for change of assessment for Gao Ke Sing Hani, which is APN number 101-070-022. First is applicant here with us today or any of his representatives? Okay, it does not appear that they're here. In that case, by Rule 313, with that lack of appearance, we could deny that application. Is that my understanding?
Yes, it was.
Notice was given?
Yes, the letter was sent out.
Okay, and we never received a response from Gao or his representatives?
No.
Okay, that's disappointing. Okay then, do we need a vote on that, Liz, or is it just denied at this point for failure of appearance? Okay. You know, and before we move off this as the Board of Equalization, I had really hoped that this would come before the board for discussion. Those of you that may have read through the applications and are familiar with this, this is the old nautical inn restaurant property, and for lack of consideration by the California Coastal Commission in this case, the permits that were issued by the county for the development of this property and the use that this individual had applied for with the county were denied by the Coastal Commission. So at this point, we sit with another vacant lot and a vacant restaurant, and a use that could have been developed that would have been income generating for this community. It's extremely disappointing. I understand the approach that was taken to reassess the value of that property. Unfortunately, this falls squarely back on the shoulders of the California Coastal Commission and their continued, I believe, abuse of development within our community within that coastal zone. So it's disappointing. I wish that they were here today to help air some of those concerns and frustrations that they experienced over the last three years of doing this, but I'm sorry, Gao was denied that permit by the county to move forward with that project. It would have been of great benefit to our community and absolutely lifting an ice or out of the area. All right, we will go ahead and reconvene from the Board of Equalization to the County Board of Supervisors and receive a report from the Cannabis Working Group. I believe Jesse Davis is here with us today. Good morning, Jesse. Come on down. I see you brought a volume of information with you.
Hopefully I don't have to open it up. Good morning, thank you. Okay, catching my breath here. So I'm just going to talk about what we talked about at our last meeting on February 15th. Hopefully, some of you or all of you had a chance to see the video recording. So our discussion wasn't organized in a particular way, but we were basically just focusing on discussion around retail cannabis locations, and then we got into taxes also because they go together. So there's a lot of, see, so I sort of separated this out into areas where we found consensus and then areas where we're still discussing, and then there's points here that will be relevant that we didn't talk about at all yet. So signage and visibility seems to be a big one, what it looks like, what the signs look like. There's some limited ability of the county to regulate signage. A county council can explain that. There's discussions about whether or not these locations should be on Highway 101. The frontage that's in the county, most of it's in, most of the commercial zoning would be in the city limits, but we do have some here. And then discussions about zonings, I think we're talking about commercial zones, although we didn't talk about it specifically, but I'm not inclined to permit these in residential zones. And then the bulk of the discussion is probably how many, the quantity of the stores, how to limit the number if you decide to do that. If you pick a number, how do you pick who operates the stores, for example? And so to that, we sort of had a discussion about, maybe there's a way to just simply restrict the available areas enough that the county doesn't get into having to pick who operates them, it would just sort of naturally reduce the number. So the areas where we kind of had consensus was... So the areas where we kind of had consensus was limited visibility and limited signage to whatever extent is legal. Significant space between the stores. The group doesn't seem to want to have one section in the county where there's stores, but spread out. I hadn't talked about specifically what that space would be between the stores. And then where not to put them is probably the better discussion than where to put them. And then the distance from these sensitive zones where you wouldn't want to have retail outlets, schools, churches, things like that. These are state standards for those kinds of sensitive areas. There's consensus to want to increase these setbacks that are the minimum setbacks from the state to something larger. That would include public parks, places where kids hang out, maybe. There's issue of onsite consumption. It's, it can be a thing in retail outlets. As a group, we have a consensus to not, at this time, allow onsite consumption at retail locations. It adds a layer of complication and liability for the store owners. So that's a point of consensus. And perhaps limiting the size of a single retail outlet in some capacity so as to maybe limit the, prevent the domination of a single large outlet or just to not have large facilities going on in general. That kind of covers the main points of as far as we got with retail locations. Then we got into taxes. State taxes are pretty high already. They come in at around 40% at least of the total industry. But some taxes directly to the county, we think is appropriate, not to rely on the state to return any of the money that they get to the county, but to have a specific tax, like a sales tax, for example. If the taxes are too high, it drives business out of town. If it's too low or if we don't have any, then it doesn't help the county. So we try to find some kind of ground there. As far as a sales tax on retail sales, it would be specific to, it would be the county's own tax. We've talked about something in the range of 1% to 5% on top of the sales tax that already exists. And so that kind of got into the discussion about recreational versus medical outlets. And it seems like in order to capture significant tax revenue from traffic that comes through the county, that that tax, that sales tax would be on recreational retail sales. Right now, the state doesn't collect sales tax on medical sales, but that only applies if you have a state-issued ID card, which is a little bit more expensive to get than the way it is done now. But you can, one can avoid that sales tax if they wanted. And there really wouldn't be necessarily significant sales on the medical side only here, enough to get excited about the tax revenue. The real numbers would come in on recreational retail. So sort of consensus of the group to allow recreational retail sales in order to make the tax revenue something significant. And then in terms of taxes, of course, they have to be voted on by the people. In order to get something on the ballot for November, we need a tax measure before May. And from what I understand, we don't have to have regulations in place for the businesses, but we do need to have a tax structure, timeline, that kind of thing, actual numbers, something that the Board can approve before May so that it can get on the ballot by November. And then just business development in general increases property taxes, real estate taxes, and unsecured business asset property taxes. That'd be another source of revenue. So then our next meeting, which is going to be this Thursday, we'll continue our discussion on these, all these details for retail. And Community Development intends to create some maps showing the commercial zones, the sensitive areas, the no zones, and drawing circles around these no zones and whatever the setbacks. Talking about at least 1,000 feet, you know, maybe 2,000 feet even, where the state standards are 600 feet. Those are some numbers that got thrown out. So we'll look at these maps, and sort of the hope is that it'll get whittled down to such a narrow area that we won't have to worry so much about picking a hard number like five or 10 or whatever, and then going through a process of how to pick those. So there's discussion about how to do that, an RFP process, or a lottery, or other ideas that municipalities have kicked around. But the main idea is that we need to come up with something that's super transparent so there's no doubt about how the process took place. Pretty much covers it for the meeting. And I'd like to make a comment about the ban ordinance briefly, but I can do that at another time or take questions about the meeting first.
You're certainly welcome to come back on that item, which is item number 13 on our agenda and make comment there. It's obviously welcome from you as the Chair of the Cannabis Working Group in this case. But I'd also like time for the Board to address any questions they might have for you before we turn it open to public comment.
Okay. Yeah, so just in reference to item 13, the ban ordinance, it's what the working group expected to see. We think it's a good idea and allows continuation of our work. So, yeah, actually, I think it's the biggest news yet from the Board, really, the final paragraph in Section One, Paragraph F. And if the Board intends to waive full reading of the ordinance, I'd like to just read this last paragraph.
Please.
If that's okay. So this is, Section One, which describes the authority and purpose of the ordinance. The ordinance is just simple. It's two sentences long, but the first page describes the authority and purpose, and this is the final paragraph. "It is in the best interest of Delmarque County to completely prohibit the establishment or operation of commercial cannabis activity for which a license is required under Division 10." That's state law Business and Professions Code, Division 10. "Until such time as the county can adopt comprehensive regulations for the operation of such activity within the county. It is the intention of the Board of Supervisors that this prohibition will be repealed and comprehensive regulations will be enacted by December 12, 2018." So I think that clearly states the intention of the Board. It gives a timeline, super clear, it's as clear as it can be, and I think it's just what the county needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Jesse?
Well, just an observation. You said meetings Thursday. It's my understanding it's tomorrow.
Yeah, I, it was going to be tomorrow, and I messed up. I didn't authorize the agenda in time. I'm still learning the ropes about how it works, and I didn't, I was away and didn't receive the email, and I didn't, I got a call. Kylie, great work to coordinate it, but I blew it, and so it's Thursday.
So it is Thursday?
I believe we got it for Thursday.
A little bit more, because I know it's all Facebook as of tomorrow.
Yeah, I did edit it. I know, I edited it, but it doesn't come through.
Okay. And then the other thing, you know, you guys are doing a great job, and you're talking about the zonings not being by schools, not being by churches and daycares. And my concern is, right now, the state really isn't as strict as we would be on that at all. I don't think there's anything.
They have a setback of 600 feet, but we're allowed to increase that.
600 feet isn't too much.
Yeah.
You know, right now, folks, we are under state control. We're the only county in California that is under state control because of, because of what happened. And some of you may like that state control. I personally don't because I don't think it's in best interest of Delmarque County to be under the control of the state, especially on laws like this. I mean, the last one we just discussed was a perfect example with the dwellings. I had, you know, a dwelling go up right in front of someone's kitchen window, and now, you know, we could have the chance of grows going out right outside your kitchen window or right next across the street from the schools, you know, and the lot across from Pine Grove or right next door to Best Maxwell. And that's not in the best interest of our children. And we are here to do what's best interest of all of Delmarque County. And, and that is to make sure, I mean, we don't normally get control, local control. It's very, very unusual. The Board before us in 2000, or, yeah, 2015 fought for that. Before cannabis was introduced on a ballot or before it was voted for, the Board previous voted, got together with other Northern California counties and asked for local control and legislation, and they received it. And unfortunately, a couple supervisors have given that away last month. And I, I don't like that. You know, I want local control. We very rarely get it. So I appreciate everything that the working group is going for. I look forward to everything coming back to us so that we can get ordinances on the books and move forward. Because right now, all the money that everybody thinks we're going to get is going to the state, and we need it to come back to Delmarque County. Thank you.
So, yeah, feedback for our meeting on Thursday is, is good for us, good time for us.
Other comments from the Board? Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, Jesse, yeah, thank you for your, for your work on all of this, but the tax measure, is that something that you're working on also, the amount of tax?
Yeah, it's part of our discussion, yeah, for sure.
And it appears as though that's relatively important to get that on the ballot, so we need to, and that's something that's not necessarily in the ordinance, but this is the taxing measure?
I think it might be a separate ordinance. Joel could probably explain how it works technically better than I could, but I think it-
I'll bring that up again, but if you guys are working on that and we need to get that portion done, I'm hopeful that the timeline that we're talking about, December the 18th or whatever it is, is a long enough time for you to get done what you need to do.
I think it is, yeah. It won't be enough time to, this will be an ongoing project, this board, the next board, the next board after that. It'll require lots of attention from the county forever. But, yeah, the bulk of what we're trying to do, it's a realistic timeline, end of the year, I think. And then also for the tax measure, I think it's something we can do and get it on the ballot in time.
Oh, I think that, I think that's imperative. I think the lady spoke to it earlier about not having to have a special election.
Right, yeah, that was, you'd have to either wait till the next election cycle or pay for a special election.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the Board? Jesse, at the last meeting, you spoke towards having gone through the personal use piece of this. The working group has pretty much gone through that. And do you have anything solidified enough to bring to the Board sooner than later? I mean, with these components, you're addressing in this case, kind of medical, recreational to a certain extent, retail, you're probably going to address the taxation piece extensively at this upcoming meeting.
Right.
You're going to have to address transportation and delivery at some point. There's various components that fit into an ordinance. I mean, how's that timeline breaking down as far as prioritization and getting pieces back to the Board?
Right, yeah, so we're doing it in a piecemeal fashion, so it'll be one section at a time rather than presenting a whole stack to consider. That'd be unrealistic. And so the personal cultivation guidelines are sort of out of our hands. That's in County Council's hands now. And, yeah, they're just busy doing their real job on top of this. So in order to extend, to ramp things up, you'd have to probably contract out legal help to make it go quicker. But, yeah, I'm not sure exactly where Joel is on that, but they're fine. They're, they're turning it into a real ordinance that the Board can consider. That would come first, and then, yeah, now that I understand the tax, the timeframe for the election, it'll probably be, that will be the focus of what'll be presented in legal form next after the personal cultivation, which is a tax structure. And that would have to be for all the layers of the business, not just retail, because then you'd have to have another election. So it would be all the layers of the industry that you might imagine you would have in the future, whether or not you have them. And it sounds like it's okay to have that tax on a part of the business even if you never get around to having it.
And then one final component, if I could have you recall the conversation with the Board two weeks ago. You made the observation specific to the, basically, the 58 counties' progress to date with those 58 counties in either bringing forward a ban or having some form of regulation on cannabis within their community. You had made the statement that you felt very strongly that Delmarque County, to a certain extent, was somewhere around number seven out of the 58 counties in the progress we've made to date as far as addressing the issues in a very transparent manner. Can you elaborate on that, why you made those statements specifically? Because, you know, Delmarque County, being one of the smallest counties in the state of California, it, it does not go to reason that we necessarily have the resources to address the issues and the strength and complexity of what's going on with commercial cannabis rollout and regulation within the state of California. What made you state that observation that we're that far ahead of other counties in the state?
Sure. Well, we're farther ahead in the sense that, that I'm here right now speaking to you.
Sure.
So that's the biggest thing, right? There's a lot of counties that don't have this. They don't have working groups. They don't have public participation other than angry mobs of people at the supervisor meetings feeling like they're being ignored. So in that sense, we're farther ahead. We're a North Coast county. The North Coast of California has been a cannabis region for, I don't know, 40, 50 years, probably. Delmarque has probably been the least part of that, of the North Coast counties, but nonetheless, we're a North Coast county. So that just naturally brings the attention forward. And the six-county policy that was created, Delmarque was part of it, Trinity, Mendocino, Lake County. So that was a big step in the direction of being in the top 10 municipalities that are forced in one way or another to pay attention to legislation that came through from the state. It didn't, it wasn't the county's initiative, it wasn't any county's initiative. Other big cannabis counties could have done things like this 20 years ago following Prop 215, and they didn't. So it was all the impetus of the MCR, the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act that was passed by the legislature in 2015. And the counties that were already involved in some level in the cannabis culture or industry, if you want to call it that, decided that, or recognized that they had to be prepared governmentally to deal with legislation that came through. And then Prop 64 added to that. Yeah, so I guess it's just that, just where we are and our neighbors, and who lives here.
Okay, appreciate it. Jesse, if you don't mind, I'm going to take public comment on any discussion items that the folks in the audience might have for the working group, any insight, and then we'll go ahead and bring it back to the Board and close out that item.
Thank you.
Is there a public comment on the presentation by Jesse and the working group at this time?
Thank you.
Good morning.
I'm glad you're back from Japan. That's nice. When the Beatles stopped there, they had to pound a pot at the airport and expelled them for life. They can't go back to Japan. They did an hour and 20 minutes-
Can you please state your name for the record when you have a-
My name is Chuck Orton.
Thank you.
And they did an hour and 20-minute interview with me at the first club in San Francisco, the Japanese did. One thing, they wanted to film this. I had a wreck with over 100 people on it. Another thing, a federal doctor at the 18th and Mission Street BA Clinic in San Francisco, federal doctor, gave me my first card, 1997. Born, raised here, drafted right down the hall. And another thing, I never want to say anything bad about you people because I really appreciate what you've done, especially you, Mr. Getlin, with the smoking over there. I waited 51 years where they can't do that in that club over there. According to Channel 3 TV, which I haven't been able to get, but the last two months, smoking, the tobacco industry in the Delmarque County, do you know what grade, any of the five, have any idea what grade you got in Delmarque County? An F. Out there, they're very informed, you got the hospital, one. No one has ever passed away here for cannabis. I don't know why. Is it something moral, man? Is that why? On my piece of property, there's absolutely, you wouldn't know where I'm going in there. I don't know where you get your produce, but at Safeway, I stopped for Peru, is somewhere where the produce comes from. I don't know if you've ever seen any of these cannabis things that you get from a club, what they say on them. Have you ever seen them? Well, you can see them-
So I don't know why you're directing it at me.
Well, because I've seen you turn your nose down on it, and I don't understand it. I don't understand why I couldn't own my piece of property. Good. They said if I got a state license, like you said, then I could. Another thing, you said something about the state. Mr. Cochran, the bridge here, give me this. Seven counties built the Golden Gate Bridge. We put the most money in up here at Seven County. And everybody that goes across there, every toll, we get a part of the toll. That's pretty nice, since 1939, I think it was, when my mom- That's pretty nice, since 1939, I think it was, when my mom graduated here. I can see this lady's getting bored, so I'm gonna hurry up and get this wrapped up here. But thanks for letting me speak. If I read all the things that I could have on my piece of property, it's one of the only piece of property in this county that can have all these different things. And like the man said next door at the building department, if I had that state license, then I'd, and we'd look for a different financing here. And the Japanese, like I said, when they first put the First Club in, 1996, they were paying from around the world, like $10,000 up, to come grow. And so I don't know why anybody would be against it. If we did all the laws and stuff like that, it would be not only a boon for this county, it's just absolutely like opening a safe to money, you know? And like I said, if it's moral or something like that, you know, I'm at the Catholic school, we all got our own beliefs, but financially, why would you not want us to have more finances? You know? So thanks for letting me speak.
Thanks, Mr. Orton, appreciate your time. Other public comment on this item? Please. Could you come up? Because I can't see you over there out of the corner of my eye. Thank you. And if you could be ready for that next comment, appreciate it. Thank you.
I was Robert, District 1, and member of the cannabis board, manage Delnort Patients Together. You know, I just wanna bring it up, you know, it says on the ordinance that the supervisor's intention is for a comprehensive ordinance. You know, I don't have that faith, you know? You know, also, the working group supports the ban. You know, I'm not part, I don't support the ban. We, Delnort Patients Together achieved a state license, it's a temporary license, and so of course your ban will fringe upon us from being able to reapply again. You know, if Chris Howard or Supervisor Hemmingson would speak up, so I'd know that they would support, you know, this comprehensive ordinance, you know, it'd be one thing. And then, you know, Howard, or Berkowitz and Gitlin, you know, I'm not sure what you guys did at all. You support a ban, is that right, Mr. Gitlin?
Continue, I'll respond after you finish.
Okay, well, as I understand it, you support a ban. And I prepared, you know, I'd hate to admit it's sarcasm, but I'd be afraid the county would take it as truth, but I wanted to thank you. You know, thank you for bringing adult-use cannabis to Delnort County. It's Roger Gitlin's vote that brought adult-use cannabis to Delnort County. Bob was gonna do what he was gonna do, and that would've been one vote, it required a four-fifth vote. Roger knew that. And they either supported cannabis user rights or something else, you know? And so I do wanna hold you to it. You guys are no votes today, Bob Berkowitz and Roger Gitlin. You know, otherwise, your vote last time just makes no sense, right? You know, I've been writing, I'm gonna say the rest of my comments for later, but I'd like to say, you know, as a member of the board, I do not support the ban. I would've supported as having, you know, something like the state has. I have a temporary license that came about, you know, because the state was not ready. And so I would've appreciated if the county had something kinda, you know, because the county's not ready, an emergency license that allows me to continue on. And I had wrote this down, you know, pursuant to the authority granted by Section 7 of Article 11 of the California Constitution, preserved by Business Code of Profession 26200s. It really is 10 extra words that you would have to add to that to accept state licensees, you know? And I've written you all, you know, told you guys how much I'm spending to be state-compliant. You know, the day that the ban dropped, you know, I signed a lease for a much better location. I applied for licensing, I bought camera systems to be compliant with the state, I sent people to train for security guards, you know, I mean, you know? There is, to say that there's no financial impact on this ordinance would be to admit that the county has a different interest than the people, you know, because it is, it does have a financial impact. This ordinance is gonna, you know, as making, as, the working group costs the county money, you know, just alone. How much did it cost for the county to approve my license? I bet you it was done in five minutes, you know? So I'll leave it there. Bob and Roger, you guys are no votes, you know?
Mr. Gitlin, would you like an opportunity to respond?
First of all, Robert, I'm not laughing.
Right. I know, you're not laughing, it's not-
May I speak, please? And the fact that you are, and behaving in somewhat of a childlike manner-
Mm-hmm.
-with your laughing and your smirking is disturbing to me. Now, I have an opinion on this. You ran against me in an election on this very issue. I stated my opinion clearly, and it hasn't changed. Now, the tactics in which we had this moment where you're sitting up in front of the dais right now is real community input. You're having your opportunity to speak. Now, where this goes, and we'll see shortly where this motion goes, I will stand up in a ban, because, number one, it is against federal law. When I hear the word medicinal marijuana, I think of a doctor, I think of a pharmacy, and I see no doctors here, ready to speak on behalf of this, I see no pharmacists with letters in back of their names.
Have you received Dr. Russell Nichols and-
May I speak, please?
Sure.
May I speak without being interrupted?
You can create whatever illusion you want.
Okay, you know what? I'll tell you how I feel about this, and I've told you to your face a number of times directly, and I've told it publicly, that I think that the recreational aspect of marijuana cultivation and retail sales will bring great harm to Delnort County. I stand by that then, and I stand by it now. I hope that's clear to you, understand?
Why did you show up at a pot expo and talk to a group of pot aficionados about how you should vote three days before you showed up to the friggin' vote?
I came to-
Why, Roger? Because you're a dishonest person? Roger, that's all that's left. I know the county to have some integrity. This is the only person I could say-
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer on any further comment.
Thank you.
That I would go to an event to get information, I didn't politic anybody there, I sat and I listened to a number of people who approached me.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I think we had one.
To Kylie, please?
Thank you. Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Joy Newhart, and this weekend is my one-year anniversary of moving to Crescent City. I've been following this matter through the Triple Kit and their reporting, and I've come to understand that this is a very contentious issue for Delnort County. So I asked myself what, this sparked my curiosity, it's like, okay, if this is so contentious, how did this county vote in the, for Prop 64 in November of 2016? And if you're, this is, this is printout that I just showed you, which is highlighted in yellow, is from the county clerk's website, and up in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see that it's dated December 8th, 2016, and this, so this is the final calculation. And much to my surprise, since it is so contentious, much to my surprise, what I learned is that every precinct in this county, all 18 precincts voted in favor of passing Proposition 64. There are the numbers, I highlighted them in yellow. I'm so new, I don't even know which precincts are in which district, so I don't even know what this talks about. But what I do see is that every precinct in this county voted in favor of passing Prop 64. So the argument that this is counter to the interests of Delnort County is proved false by this document from the county clerk. And I don't have a position on marijuana one way or the other, and that's the reason why I've sort of stayed neutral. But I do have a position on the ballot box. And the ballot box clearly states that this county is in favor of recreational use of marijuana. And so I brought along California code, government code, and it clearly states what your obligations are as supervisor. And I've, as I've recognized, I've read the reading in the Triple Kit, I've heard you guys kick this can down the road, delay, you know, delay, delay making a decision. And in my opinion, that's a demonstration of poor faith. You've been assigned a task as the representatives of the constituents of this county. This county has clearly voted in favor of medicinal, recreational use, and I believe in the ballot box. Whatever the position is on marijuana, I believe in the ballot box. And the ballot box has clearly spoken. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Any other-
Chair, can I respond to her really quick? Just, because I just feel like there's misinformation.
Supervisor.
So I agree with you 100%. I realize, and I believe most of us realize, where the county voted. I don't think that's, I don't, in my opinion, that's not the argument. In my opinion, is we're trying to do ordinances. We started this process, I came on the board in January, we started the process in February, right away. We've had six workshops. We agreed that we wanted our county to decide, like Jesse was saying, we're the only county doing this. Just, so, you know, decided on the ordinances-
Thank you.
-of where it's gonna be, how many, what's the zoning, all that stuff. There's, it's not, it's not a matter of can we have it or not, it's, okay, we're gonna have ordinance to have it, what are the ordinances gonna be? What is the zoning gonna be? How many retail shops are we gonna have? Are we gonna have three, are we gonna have 20? Where are they gonna be located? Are they gonna be across the street from a school, or do they have to be a mile away? There's just so many layers to it. So we did the workshops, then we formed the working group, trying to bring the whole community into this, so that we can make a decision. So hearing that it's being kicked down the road is, to me, kind of like, we have been working on this nonstop. We want answers, just like you do. I am not against the sale of marijuana. I've never said I was. So when this gentleman's saying I'm against it, or I look down at it, my son has his card. I know what it's all about. I'm not against it. I'm against making sure the state does not have control of what we do in Delnort County. That is what the issue is right now.
Thank you. Supervisor? Thank you. Let's go ahead and bring this back to order. Is there any other public comment? I think we had one right here. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Good morning.
My name is Aaron Scrobak.
Oh, I can't, I'm sorry. Please.
Hello, my name is Aaron Scrobak, Delnort County resident and a registered voter. One of three in my household of like-minded individuals who will certainly be voting in this coming election. We do not want a ban. It is better at this point to allow the state to have control than once again ban cannabis in Delnort, hoping that eventually, one day, this board will approve measures the working group has brought forth. It is not only likely, but probable, that this board is wasting the group's time, money, and resources and effort, as they have no intention of ever approving their recommendations. The state has had control for about a month now, and may have issued one temporary retail license. The board's scare tactics of how the sky is going to fall with the state in control is utter nonsense. You've all had numerous chances to get this right, but continue to make a mockery of what we, as voters, have chosen through deceit, deception, propaganda, political shenanigans, and misinformation. So these final words are not to the board, but to the voters. Vote them all out.
Thank you. Other comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Kathy Williams, I'm a resident of Delnort County for two years now, a little over two years. My husband's employed in this county. He is a social worker for Child Welfare System through DHSS. We pay our taxes. I have several autoimmune disorders over the last year and a half, and it wasn't until I moved to this county. I was on 17 different medications. I'm on one, Ibuprofen, and medical marijuana. I have my 215. I did a lot of research about CBDs. I kept hearing about it, and I really didn't know, you know, poop from Shinola about what a CBD is, so I had to do a lot of research and keep an open mind, because I come from the generation where we did it just so we could enjoy a movie or bad music. And I needed this, I still need this. It's here, I'm able to get my medicine sometimes. I need to know that I can get it all of the time in a safe, secure environment. I would like these people that are running these businesses to have some sort of direction from the county. I went in one day and I paid 7.5% sales tax for my medication, and then the very next day, I paid 23% tax. I'm paying this every time I go to the store. Where's my money going to? To hear that not a penny is coming to this, so maybe we can get a veterans memorial or a water fountain at the dog park, so we can get something going on, is appalling, because it's coming out of my pocket. And it's here. Recreational is here. I was there. Medical is here. I don't think any of this is going to go away. Please, stop relying on a committee. Stop using them as the fall guy and do your jobs. Mr. Gitlin, you knocked on my door at Shelter Island Park over a year ago. I was so impressed with the fact that you came into that park on foot and knocked on every single door and spoke to us, no matter who we were or how we were registered, and I asked you about medical marijuana. I know you don't remember me. You said you had an open mind, you were not against it. Please help us. Please help the people that are trying to help us. I see them go under. I know of one that just went under. That's why I'm going to a different place now, because of all these ordinances. Do your jobs. Stop relying on a cannabis committee that are doing their job, listen to them. I don't hear that you're listening to them. I don't hear anything that you can tell me, well, we've got this one thing in place. We've got this, and then we need to move on. Tell us something you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other public comment? It's okay, yeah, and after this one? Go ahead, please. Thank you. Thank you for being ready.
My name is Amber Rainnash. I've been a resident here for about six and a half years. You'll have to excuse me, I suffer from multiple disabilities, and it makes it very difficult to even be here or stand. We have had Compassionate Use Act in this county, in this state, since '06. Our constituents have all spoken. They have asked that their medicine be allowed to continue. You have taken away our stability, you have taken away our ability to do normal, everyday things. You have no idea how bad I'm shaking right now, because just being here makes me ill. And you are taking away our medicine. You are undermining our veterans, our teachers, our nurses and doctors. And just so you know, it's called an endocannabinoid system. It is in your brain, your brain, your brain, your brain. All of us have an endocannabinoid system. The CBD chemical in marijuana actually interfaces with that system and allows for reduction of hypertension, for reduction of anxiety, for PTSD relief, sleep help, food. Being able to eat when you have cancer is one of the most important things, and we are taking this away. You are causing patients to cross state lines, incurring a federal offense. I was told by the mayor's office to go to Brookings. They told me to break the law. We are supposed to have this in this state, to protect our residents. Whether you personally agree with it or not, the constituency has proven that they are ready for this. Please do your jobs. I've listened to some of you on Facebook, I know what your positions are, I listened to your radio interviews, and I am appalled that our personal choices, our personal influences are overriding the democracy that we have all stood to protect. I understand about wanting to keep the money here for us and to protect our interests, but you cannot do it on the backs of the patients. You may not use us as a leverage tool anymore. We will use our power and our voice to vote you out if you will not do the job you signed up for. With much respect, I thank you.
Thank you very much. Please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Fran White. Hey, I'm a resident of Delnort County. I've been a medical marijuana user for over five years now, and I don't know that I can add much more than anybody else in this room already has, and I totally agree with everything that's been said. Each and every strain- They're used to treat everything from migraines, cancer, Parkinson's, tremors, and the list goes on and on. Basing on what I did a little bit of research, Humboldt County is projecting a $7.3 million increase in their tax revenue for 2018. Colorado, last year, made over $200 million in tax revenue from medical cannabis. Opioids, the opioid crisis last year killed 25,000 people. Okay? No recorded cannabis deaths due to marijuana on record. Opioids are the highest rating causes death in people under 50 in the United States, and the numbers are increasing. Even President Trump is trying to do something about the opioid crisis. If people can't use the medical marijuana that people are used to using, then they're going to have to go to something. My doctor knows. She just can't write me a prescription. I have to pay for this out of my pocket, and I am willing to do so because I cannot and I will not use the opioids. I will not use the pain medications. This puts us in a really liable position because, like this last lady just said, we have to go outside of, if this is banned, we have to go outside of the county. And we will. And unfortunately, we could use that money in our own county. And I just feel that it's very unfair to make us have to go outside the county and try to find other resources, which we will do. It's here. It's going to stay here. And we may as well use that resource. You know, I mean, can you imagine what $7.3 million would do for Del Norte County? Have you driven down Front Street? It's like riding a boat. We could fix, Fart Street, they take that money and they put it in a dog park. You could use that money for so much, so much better. Fix some of the buildings downtown. Clean up downtown. I, myself, was a leader of the Del Norte Cash Mob. For a year and a half, we went out and we supported all the local downtown businesses. We took 20 to 50 people into these organizations. And I seen with my own eyes what these people need down there. We, 60 people of us went into the mammal center, and we brought in over $2,500 in less than an hour. You know, I mean, if you, if you really put yourselves out there, you can do such good things. And I really feel that the money, the tax money itself brought in, would be such a benefit to Del Norte County.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you.
I think there was one more comment, if I remember right. Okay, there you are. If you pause just a second, Kevin. I think she had her hand up first. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning.
What's?
I'm a little overwhelmed. My name is Marquita Owen. And I find, in listening to everything here today, that taxes and medical marijuana is really one of the most important things being discussed. And it's my understanding, I've been told, that medical marijuana could be handled legally and through agencies and pharmacies or whatever, just like any other medicines. Maybe it's in existence now, I don't know. But anyway, to me, our highest priority should be to our children. And following are a few facts that must be considered. We haven't talked about children today. And younger and younger children are trying marijuana. And to, as of now, there is no understanding of what this will have on an undeveloped brain such as the teenagers. Children's Hospital in Colorado states that the long-term effect is unknown. And Dr. Wang of that same hospital found that emergency room visits by teens and young adults have quadrupled in 2017. That's in Colorado. The Oregonian published an article in January 2018 that one in five marijuana shops sold underage. And so, this is affecting our youth. And we don't know what the effect's going to be later on in their life, as we didn't in cigarettes. And now, my people my age are dying of emphysema and such as that. So, there are so many adverse issues and problems that come with legalization of marijuana that you have to deal with. There are regulations and enforcement of grow in sales, what the real gain would be, since it has been proven by neighboring counties that evolving regulations and enforcement issues take more time and money than planned. And Josephine County has 5,000 illegal operations as to 3,000. So, it's hard to enforce and to regulate. And what looks good on paper, sometimes it doesn't always work out. The theory that the cannabis industry will flatten out in not-too-distant future, that is monetarily, is often difficult to carry out, or is, that could reduce tax dollars. And the adverse effects on education such as higher dropout rates and lower graduation rates. These are problematic projects that will come to the board, and workloads will increase as you, as our leaders. Now, I'm a little nervous today because I've heard so many adverse things. You know, so many things that people want here. And I like to listen to other people, I really do. But based on the history of the other counties, there's a, you know, we need to look at our economy and the effect on that, too. I know there are increased taxes and things could be done with that money. But we have to look at the other effects that are, come into play here, too. It's just not a one-two thing. It's really a diverse thing. Now, I do think that supplying pain-relieving medical marijuana is indisputable because people in pain must, they must have relief. There's no question there. It is challenging to regulate and enforce. It should be administered by designated agencies so that these people get their medical marijuana. And these are my beliefs. I've lived well over eight decades, and I've seen communities change, and it's not always for the better. But please make the right decision, right decision for our beautiful county. And I'm asking that we, we ban the growing of marijuana in our county. And I'm just about one out of how many here?
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Other public comment before we bring it back to the board? Mr. Hendricks, please. And then?
We still have four?
We haven't moved to the ban yet, so we're not on item 13. This is still a discussion about the working group and what their efforts have been.
Yeah.
But you're certainly welcome to come back and comment on 13.
I'll come back on 13. This is something I hadn't thought about is, and it's come up a couple times today, which is the timing of a vote on the tax. I just want to put an underline under that, that, and I agree with Mr. D'Agostino that it's not clear what you'll all do. It's nice to see words in the, in the ban that you'll consider bringing things back. And, you know, you all have to make your best choices. But if that happens and we don't have a tax in place, then one of the primary benefits of considering this is, is being lost. So, I would, whatever you have to do to support and encourage the working group and your attorneys and your staff to make sure that that ballot deadline gets met, so that the people can vote on the tax. And it probably would have to be conditional on that there's actually illegal sales. But you can have a tax in place that will only be effective if, if you, in fact, do endorse a comprehensive ordinance. So, I just want to put an underscore on that because the taxation on this seems, in addition to your points on local control. And, and I love that comment that I just heard. People should be able to state their positions in a polite and respectful way. And I thought that the young lady before me did a great job. And, you know, there are rules. It is a law. We all voted for it. We didn't all vote for it, but 59.5 percent. And it's, there's age limits. 21. So, it's not, there are precautions. And, and those precautions will be enforced better if we have a local law enforcement capacity and funding for them to make sure that it's not being abused. Cigarettes, tobacco, and cannabis, 21 is, is a good rule, and that's an enforceable rule. So, I share our concern about our children and your concern about the schools. And that's why we want to have rules. And that's why it's worth considering the next steps. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Ms. Dickey?
I'm Victoria Dickey. I live in Supervisor Berkowitz District. Not too awfully long ago, I lost a friend of over 60 years. Oh, shoot, that tells you I'm more than 29. And I am. He had a very, very bad form of cancer, extremely painful. It was suggested that he try marijuana. I believe that he ate some or whatever. He'd never smoked in his life. I believe that if someone is in death's grip, we as a society don't really have much of a right to tell them what to do. When it comes to the medical, if there's a real reason, and there's a medical reason, I've heard a lot of them today, my heart goes out to these people. However, I'm going to use an analogy. We have this thing called service dogs. People can have a service dog. If they want to move into a residence, you can't deny them the ability to move in. You can't charge more rent, all of those things. This is pretty defined characteristic. Then the next thing that came along is this companion dog. Right now, that's really in a state of flux. Nobody knows. To me, there's the same analogy. We have medical marijuana, and again, if a doctor believes, and I would like to see standards set so that when someone gets marijuana, they know that they're getting like a five-gram USP for their aspirin. And if they take two, they've got 10. I'm hoping medical marijuana is regulated in that kind of fashion. When it starts getting to recreational, it isn't just a necessity, it is a recreational thing. It is a choice. It isn't something that's necessarily going to make life any better than having a drink. Do I think we should regulate it? Well, I think that what we end up with is a lot of people who stand to lose a lot more because their children are going to be smoking it. When they go into homes, I don't know if you've ever tried to clean a house after it's been smoked in. It's, it's very difficult. It's very expensive. And I think that there's a whole different ballgame on these two things. I think you should be addressing the medical and getting that taken care of. I appreciate the one little old lady over here who isn't really that old, but a beautiful white-haired lady, who had the nerve to stand up here, about the first time I've seen her here, and say something that probably isn't very popular. But there are at least two of us little old ladies in the room that are not totally in favor of whatever. In fact, if it were, if I were, I voted against it. I've seen nothing to change my mind. Medical, that's a different ballgame. And, and I need to sit down to read.
Thank you, Ms. Dickey. Any final public comment before we bring it back to the board?
Good morning. I'm Ms. Satterfield, Fifth District. I do see we have Mayor B. Lake Insgro in the house. And gosh darn, Mr. Insgro, if you're telling people to go across the line to get their marijuana, cross the state line, I think you might want to reconsider doing that. Okay, so, in December?
Please. Thank you.
Okay, whatever. I don't know what she said, but, okay, so, back, okay, so, December, you guys put a ban on marijuana. Okay, everybody lived with that because we were going to develop ordinances. No problem. January, you lifted that ban. Now, somebody went out and got a state license, and I think it's opening up a business. And now, today, you're going to vote on putting the ban back on there. Do you guys kind of see where the problem's going to be? I know, you can, you can vote on it, but there's no ordinance enacted. And this person that went and spent all that money on their business license, you don't think that if you shut him down, or tried to shut him down, there's not going to be a lawsuit of that? And you're going to use taxpayers' money to defend your, your indecisiveness? You guys are really pathetic. This is disgusting. This is not leadership. This is foolishness. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Bonnie Sharnick. I recently moved here from Fresno County. I'm really happy to be in Del Norte County. And I have voted in, I vote in midterm elections. I vote in special elections. I vote in general elections. So, I'm happy to bring my, what I know, and my vote here to Del Norte County. I would also like to out myself as a recreational marijuana user. I stand with people who didn't always have the privilege of getting a medical diagnosis in order to use marijuana recreationally. Just as many people like to have a glass of wine or a drink recreationally, I feel that I understand my responsibility in using that. And I also stand with people who look a lot like me, who are serving under mandatory minimum sentences for having marijuana on them versus people who look a lot like you who didn't get the same sentence and who have not had the same experience when using marijuana and being caught with marijuana. I would like to just urge the board to stray from hyperbole in some of the things that you hear. I would also like to urge the committee that you work with to consider the experience of people who might be marginalized, the experiences of people of color who would like to have the same type of privilege extended to them. We have not always been able to be invited to the table in discussions like this, and we have not always been taken seriously when we do speak up in discussions like this. So, I would urge you to please consider people like myself and people who are not able to speak today because they're not free to speak. I also have a daughter, and I have many concerns about the things that she sees. I have many concerns about the amount of liquor stores that we pass on our route to school. I have many concerns about the signage on those liquor stores, about how many beers I can get for my dollar. And I'm sure that there are ordinances in place for how those stores operate when they attempt to sell liquor and nicotine and other products like that. I would urge the board to consider those ordinances. Perhaps some of those can be applied with the same consideration to either recreational or medical marijuana. That's what precedent means. It's been set in place for other means and other products. I'm certain that you are all capable, as well as the committee, of coming to an understanding. And I think that the consensus from what I'm hearing from people is, please do that sooner rather than later. A special election, sounds like it would be awful costly. And as elected positions, I would hate to sit and say, well, gee, I sure don't know what to do. I sure haven't been told what to do. And I'm relying on hyperbole and propaganda. That's some of what I'm hearing today. I have seen directly what hyperbole and propaganda does and how it affects people like me. And I'm just here to beg you to please do anything you can to stop that, to look at this rationally, to look at this with some education, even if it's not necessarily what you agree with, as you, Mr. Gitlin, promised to do when you spoke with my mom, who crossed party lines to vote for you. So, please consider that we are considering your stance. And I would like to be heard as a person who, like I said, hasn't always been heard. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay. See, no further public comment. Jesse, please approach the dais. Thank you. I didn't think it would move into item 13 so quickly. I know we're wrapping up your item, which is the working group presentation. Anything you would like to add before we close that item?
Yeah, just briefly.
Yeah, just briefly. Most of the comments that I heard, I think, illustrate why it's so important to take time to get these ordinances right. And then one thing I think is very important for the board to reiterate is that this ban on item 13 doesn't have anything to do with current medical cannabis access, collectives. The way that everybody is able to access cannabis now is not going to be affected, so don't think or believe that current medical collectives are going to be closed because of this. If there's anybody who went and applied for a state license, which I believe was premature, and they're operating in that sense, that would potentially not be allowed, but that's not the same as medical collectives that have been in operation for years. They can continue to operate as they have for the rest of the year. So it's really important for everybody to understand, this is not a ban on medical cannabis access. And then, it's hard for me personally to see supporters and hear supporters of cannabis, real, true supporters and lovers of cannabis, it's hard to see them not supporting this process. And I hear, I heard a couple of people who are real supporters of cannabis, but they're not supporting the process that the working group is in. And I think that comes from a lack of understanding about how government works. Two years ago, I didn't understand anything about how government works, and I just assumed that the board was gonna, would just copy Humboldt's ordinance or something like that. I didn't know anything about the process. I always complained all my life about how slow government moves, and how I can't get my permits for anything in time. It's because I didn't understand how it worked. I just rolled my eyes on, to it, and thought everybody was just corrupt and for themselves and all of that, and it's not true. It's, it's, I don't know why it is exactly the way it is, but it's, it's, it's because we have a large group of people in a community trying to agree on how to live, it takes a long time to figure out what to do. And so people who want to rush government into a solution, it's misplaced and it's misguided, and it comes from not understanding how the process works. So it's really important to educate yourself about government process and why it takes so long, and not to rush this. We're like, we're on the eve of amazing progress. This is like Christmas Eve. We've been doing this for, we've been fighting for 20 years, and now we're in the final stretch, and everyone wants to complain about how we're not done yet. And it's really frustrating, you know? It's like, one more year is not gonna hurt us. If we rush this, it's gonna blow all the progress that we've made all these years. So let's not be like, ruin Christmas by opening all of our presents on Christmas Eve. That's kinda what this feels like. Let's not rush it. We can, we take the time to finish this two-decade-old thing, and not blow it, and pretend like we haven't been doing anything. The county's a little bit behind, you know, that's okay, but we are where we are now, and it's most productive, I think, to really genuinely understand the process and do everything that you can to support it wherever you are. If you're on the working group, or if you're, if you're here at the board meetings, or you're gonna vote, just support the process and learn about it, and don't complain about it so much. Just help us. Thanks.
Thank you, Jesse. I'm gonna go ahead and move straight into item number 13, which is, we're gonna skip over 12, sorry, Mr. Ward, we'll get back to you. Since we're on this topic, we might as well address it now, which is, approve the introduction of an ordinance prohibiting commercial cannabis activity by title only, and wait for the reading of the ordinance. Set the ordinance for adoption March 13, 2018. Board supervisors meeting as requested by County Councilor Joel Campbell Blair is here with us from County Council today to address this issue.
Good morning, everybody. This is what we said we'd come back with when the interim failed. It is, this is a non-interim, non-urgency item. It's a three-fifths vote. It won't expire automatically, it will continue. There's a, first section is a set of, kind of, the law, the authority we're using, and some policy of the board. These are things that we tried to distill where the board was coming from, and what the board wanted, and what the board's intention was, and that's, you know, what resulted in that last paragraph about the December 12 intention. That's the date that the interim ban would have expired had it been extended for the 10 and a half months. So even though that interim failed, I think it was pretty clear that a majority of this board had intended to go forward, let the working group work, keep a prohibition in place, and so that's, this is the closest approximation to what I understood the board to want, that we could do. I feel like there's probably a lot of things that I can clarify, having heard the public comment. This has nothing to do with the current access to medical cannabis, as Jesse said. Right now, that happens under the collective model that continues. This is about state licenses for commercial businesses. There's literally one person, I think, maybe two, that this affects, and it's, you know, it's Robert and his temporary licenses. So I, you know, I think there is kind of a lot of misunderstandings led to a lot of what sounds like frustration and anger. I hope, I hope I can answer any questions that might clear some of that up for you guys. You know, other than that, it's a short, a very short little ban. Are there any questions?
Questions for Joel?
Going back to what Jesse said earlier, because we are going through this process, and it is working, and the first set is in your office, is that correct? And that is on personal grow?
The regulation of the six plants for personal cultivation is in our office, and it is close. The working group has agreed basically on what they want. We drafted it, we've gotten comments from community development, and now we're just tinkering, because we're lawyers and we tinker, and it'll, it'll happen, but, you know, soon.
So that's the first one. So to make it clear, it's my understanding, if this ban is put in place, then we will do amendments to it, correct?
That is my intention, based on what the working group wants, with the, bring it back in phases, or sections, or piecemeal, however you wanna call it. And then each time we do that, you know, we'll amend it so that, if the first one is retail, we'll amend it so that retail isn't banned anymore, and so on, until hopefully by December 12, they're all done.
So we're gonna just piecemeal it, so I just want everybody to understand that. We don't, we're not just throwing out this blanket ban that's gonna stop all you guys from getting your medical, that's not true, I think you all heard that. We're not trying to just keep it in place. As the working group rolls out ordinances, and they're agreed upon, then we will do amendments to the ban accordingly.
Yes. Other supervisors at this time?
Supervisor Gitlin, please. Joel, I'm so glad that you underscored that this does not affect medicinal, medical marijuana, which I have stated publicly that I support on a compassionate basis, and I know we've heard some people come up here and talk about this. We are talking about recreational, commercial, recreational. We're not talking about banning the medicinal aspect of it. And I wanna make that very clear to everyone here, because water, seawater and freshwater's getting, getting mixed together very much, and...
Can I make one clarification?
Go ahead.
We are talking about medicinal to the extent that that medicinal was commercial. To the extent that if a commercial retail license was for medical, then we are actually talking about prohibiting medical. What we're not talking about is stopping the collective model where people are currently getting, it's only been, I don't know, a week or whatever, that Roberts had a temporary license to sell commercial medical. Up until then, the only way to get it was through these collectives, and that continues, so...
Now, the Alma Law, which was passed by voter plebiscite, does not and will not affect the six-plant protocol, that anyone here in this room, for their own personal use, including medicinal, can grow and harvest and use their six plants. Is that correct?
That is correct. This ban will not prohibit those six plants. Those six plants are currently subject only to the state regulations, and that is the first thing the working group will bring forward, as Supervisor Callen was mentioning. So this is only about, you know, there's all the license types, I think there's 17 or 18 license types from the state. They can only be issued if they're not in conflict with county law. They are now in conflict with county law if this passes. Anything else? The personal, the six plants, the collectives, all of that is untouched by this.
Thank you. Other questions from the board at this time? Supervisor Hemmingson?
Medical marijuana, is it illegal federally?
Yes.
So, we have a supervisor who thinks that it's, it should be illegal recreationally because it's federally illegal, but it's okay for medical marijuana, even though it's illegal also. I just wanted to point out that fact, that there's a lot of conflicting information that's thrown out there. I heard a lot of conflicting things from the, from the audience today, that they say that we should be reaping all these taxes, but we have no mechanism to collect any taxes. So we shouldn't be doing ordinances, but that's what it takes to collect taxes. So we're not doing our job. Well, there's a process that we have to go through to do our job, and that's the part that I think Supervisor Callen was getting to, is that it's a process that we need to get to, to do our job, and we've only been able to really know what the state was going to do as of the first of the year. So to say that we're way behind the eight ball is a little bit premature, because we've been working on this since last year, and we're trying to move as quickly as we can while addressing the impacts to those people who don't want marijuana. It's not just the people that do want marijuana, we have to address the people that don't want it. So if you don't wanna have marijuana growing in a side yard next to yours, you know, maybe that's something that we should consider. So all of those things need to come into play. That's, that's what it's all about. So we're trying to get to a process that takes care of the impacts and deals with the issue of cultivation and selling of marijuana.
Thank you, Supervisor. You're free, too. Any other questions for Joel at this time, before we open it up to public comment? Okay, let's go ahead and open up the public comment.
Since I had the first card in this county...
Mr. Orton, for the record.
Yes. I had the first card in this county in 97. Well, there was a deputy that came from LA, he thought he was Dick Tracy or somebody busting people everywhere, and so they had a court trial down here because he went in there and took a bunch of plants from a lot of people, and they brought a specialist here, but he was an author, he even sent me his book, and all the other crap that go with it. But, then they said there's six plants. Well, the county used to be, you could grow 99 plants here. I mean, come on, go right out there where people get their food stamps, put a bunch of lovely people out there, and you go in there, and for this county, you have 99 plants. You can't even do that in Amsterdam. And so, they started, when we went to court, I was a special witness, what do you wanna call it? Then it's six plants this big, and then it's cultivation, how big are they? Like I said, we've had plants, and this is on the street, got pictures, 18 feet in the air. I mean, what, when you do these ordinances, and I appreciate you guys' time, I really do, and especially talking in front of people. One, they used to have it this way, and you couldn't grow, you couldn't grow like by my shop because there was a school on the corner, you know, there's, the laws were already here, you know, and I appreciate you guys, like I said, especially this man right here, I bumped heads with him before, and I spoke out of turn, and I'm trying to control myself better, and things like that, because it takes a lot to try to get these things, not only for myself, because I can see that if I can actually pull this off, since 97, I got my card, wow, it'd be a windfall for me, and especially, like I said, I've been looking into these finances, would I like to hook up somebody in Japan, since I've already had some kind of interest in there, you know, or anybody, anybody that would wanna go in and help. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orton. Other public comment? Please. Mr. Jurega, please be ready after she's done. Thank you.
Joining her again, I would like to direct my question. I heard...
Please direct your question. Thank you.
Okay. Well, my concern is, I heard the word intention used to satisfy the deadline of December 2018. You know, I intend to have a million dollars, I'm not there. I believe that if this ordinance, if you do want to pass this ordinance, that those deadlines need to be codified. You know, intentions are nice, but if you're gonna go ahead and do this, then it needs to say that by December 18, these, these things will be definitive. So that's one comment I have. And I can't remember what the second one is, so I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Public comment, Mr. Jurega. Thank you. If there's anybody else, can you please be ready? Thank you.
And so that illustrates, you know, my fear, you know, we're putting a lot of time on the work group, and we're, we're going off of kinda what, a generalized intention sheet, you know? And I'm sorry I'm laughing, you know, it's how I deal with stress, it is an anxiety-ridden position for me. You know, and Supervisor Hemmingson, you know, yes, it's federally illegal, and Supervisor Gitlin has agreed with me, it's a federal overreach. He mentioned that at a previous meeting. You know, it's a, it's a violation of the Tenth Amendment, you know, which gives states' rights. You know, the Controlled Substance Act is, Act is a violent, is a violation of the Tenth Amendment if we didn't have the Commerce Clause. And the Commerce Clause affects everybody. It allows Congress to make laws on anything that, you know, so you have, I think you guys are in a position where you should, you should decide that, no, it's not a violation of federal law, because you have your own interpretation of federal law, and federal law would never overreach like that to violate our Tenth Amendment for something as petty as, as something that you could control, anything a dollar value is applied to. And I went up here, and I've mentioned that, you serve beer and wine, and, you know, so if Congress wants, they can, in fact, they have, they've, they've, and then repealed it again. You know, and all you guys are in business where you do things for money, you know, so this affects everybody, you know, gun rights, everything. And medical, it doesn't, you know, one thing nobody's mentioning to you, there's a lot of half-truths. It does affect medical. We can exist for nine months, and then we're resting on your intentions. We're, we can exist for nine months as a collective. So yeah, you revoke my license, I go back to being a collective, which by the way, I have, I can sell a lot more things. I have edibles right now I cannot sell to anybody, because I have a license, you know? But when I go back to a collective, I have 1,000-milligram brownies again. So I can do that for nine months, and then you guys have, 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 have killed me. You've killed the organization I started. So if you don't expect me to be up here upset and riled, you know, I was watching a Vice about gun manufacturing, and they interviewed these people at Kel-Tec. These guys are making, I have a gun, I don't mind people's gun rights, assault-looking weapons, you know? And the guy says, look, you're gonna get someone riled, no matter what you're trying to ban, because you're banning 280 jobs. I would have five people behind me right now in my shop, and I would be giving at least four or five people living wage jobs for the expansion I'm planning, and I can't do that, because I'm waking up with a heart attack, as I wrote you guys, every morning, because I signed a lease, you know, I made business decisions. I know I can pull this off. You know, and I'm sick of hearing about the state control. You know, who are we fighting over, control over? You're fighting over control of your constituency. I'm sick of hearing about our leaders fearing state control. Might I ask those leaders, who are they fighting for control of? Is their, it is their constituency they are struggling for control over. I would love to see our leaders take on the struggle of representing your constituents rather than controlling them. The chair for the Democratic Party came into my shop, trying to figure out how to frame this for Roger Gitlin, you know, that Roger Gitlin brought on a, you know, a mudslide of pot to Del Norte County, you know? For years, we went without representation, and now we can pass on being pawns. We open in an election season, and then too, we're frequented by candidates sitting, and sitting representatives that sought our support from the cannabis-using community, but never are we approached to see how our organization or membership might be better represented. Our law was brought about by a voter initiative, because not one of you, or those elected above you, or your predecessors, would speak for us, and take on the challenge of representing the meek and the voiceless, people who were too afraid to come in. I came into these, these rooms eight years ago, and Officers Rivera and Tenias, I don't know if they're still with the sheriff's office, but they came to my house within two weeks with just badges around their necks, and said my shed looked commonplace to the type used to procreate marijuana, just 'cause I spoke here about the 99 plant limit eight years ago. I shook, I could've said, hey, you don't have a warrant, but I showed them my shed, I was scared shitless. You know, at that time, there was five to 10, there was all kinds of problems, you know, and I did have a little bit growing in my laundry room, probably a couple more plants than they would've liked. And I did have a little bit growing in my laundry room, probably a couple more plants than they would have liked. So, I was shaking, you know? As I, we don't have the faith that you guys are, you know?
Thank you.
It's time for a little bit more than, you know? I would, you know, I would have loved to see, I've been writing to you guys for a month now to see that the ban include enough language to protect our organization. You know, obviously, coming from a guy who started the organization, I know we have nine months. And I don't have faith that in nine, I have faith that in three months, we might present a great retail ordinance. I don't have faith that I'll have three votes between you guys to support that ordinance. You know?
Thank you.
And so, we're left with, you know, you three, I would love to, you know? You're kind of our integrity trio right now. I would love to see you guys speak up for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. Okay. If there's no further public comment at this time, Joel, can you please approach the dius again? Is there anything after hearing public comment that you want to address at this time?
You know, the idea that the board's expression of its intent is not strong enough. You know, there's not a good solution to that if people aren't satisfied with the fact that you intend to do something. We had a ban that was going to expire automatically and have built-in timelines, and the board didn't extend that ban. So, you know, this idea that the ordinance can say the board shall have an ordinance in place by some date, what happens if you don't? Do you get arrested? Do you fine yourselves? You know, the board can't force itself to do things later on. It's one of the fundamental principles of an elected body. You can't bind the future board. What you can do is state an intention, tell your constituents you're going to do something, and then we all try real hard to get it done by that time. I mean, that's, that's what we're going to do. You know? If the board wants this thing to sunset and automatically expire on a date, we can go back and look at that. It makes me a little uncomfortable, it's odd. It's not something that county ordinance usually do. Sometimes state ordinances do it with funding issues and stuff. You know, that would leave this gap period in place for at least another meeting, maybe two, while we go back and kick it around and look at it. It's not something that we've studied. I, you know, also just anticipate another down-to-the-wire brinksmanship situation. Let's, you know, let's keep working on what we're doing, to what staff would like to do.
Thank you, Joel. Questions for Joel? Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, Joel, do we have enough time? December 18th, if that's the date, I keep throwing that out there, I think that's what I read. Is that enough time for us to get this done?
I, I think that we'll try really, really hard. I can't promise it, and I can't say it's impossible.
We've got a lot of people out there that are very suspect on our intentions, I guess.
They are.
That's why I bring it up.
Well, I mean, per con-
And I certainly don't have a problem with the ordinance sunsetting at that particular time, if you think that's enough time for us to do it.
For context, the working group agreed, more or less in principle, on the six-plant ordinance three weeks, maybe a month ago. It's close. It'll go through the Planning Commission, you'll see it in maybe a month, maybe more. We've got retail at least, and a tax ordinance, and a cultivation ordinance to do. Even if maybe we skip or delay, you know, a distribution or a processing ordinance until after that date. You know, I think we can do three in that time period. I think it's definitely important to the working group, and they're highly motivated.
The taxation intrigues me just a little bit, because that was something that I guess that I totally slipped my brain about having to have it in on a certain time. Is that something that's going to be difficult to put in place?
No, not really.
And are we on a timeline that that can be done before May?
Yeah.
So that we can help you?
So, you know, the tax issue is a simple ordinance, once we decide what the tax should be. And then the voters will approve it. And there'll be an issue of whether there's going to be a general tax or a special tax. But those are issues I think the working group can kick around. I think some of the answers are pretty obvious. The issue is what's the right amount of tax, as Jesse was talking about, too much or too little? You know, there's a sweet spot.
No, am I right to kind of think that if, if we don't have a tax in place, the ordinance is really for not?
No, no. I mean, if we, if we don't have a tax in place, but we do do the ordinances that permit it, we would have an industry, we would have legal jobs, we'd have taxpayers, we'd have the potential-
No way to pay for it.
No, okay, as you were talking about. The permitting fees, the inspection fees are not taxes, and we don't need voter approval for them. So, those would be built into any ordinance. If we do a retail, basically, any permit would probably end up being a use permit, with a fee and inspection, some environmental review. And those things would all be, have fees calculated to cover our costs. The taxes is like bonus money, that has nothing to do with the costs associated with running cannabis regulatory regime. So, you know, we would absolutely, we're directed by law to try to cover those costs with fees. And then tax money is something that would go to the voters.
Cool. The state ordinance, I guess, that's in place now, state law, I guess, that's in place now, that we have in place now, does it have a track-and-trace program?
The state law?
Yeah.
They do. I don't know, I haven't kept up on all the details of their track-and-trace program. I don't know if, you know, the temporary stuff is going through, I assume it is. I know we don't have access to it. You know, in Washington, it's public record, every sale, every transaction. California hasn't done it that way yet. So, if we as a county wanted to do it, we would need a kind of a parallel track-and-trace system. And that, you know, is something that the working group hasn't even brought up yet, but we could.
Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin?
Joel, you and I spoke about a list of 22 counties who have banned cultivation and sales of recreational, I want to keep, I hear that word, recreational marijuana. Tooluma County banned on cultivation and sales. Tahima County banned on cultivation and sales. Sonoma County banned on cultivation and sales in residential zones. I'm trying to look at counties near us. Marin banned on cultivation and sales in unincorporated areas. You were going to update that. Do you have, of the 58 counties, do you have a roster of who stands where and why? I think the public has a right to know where other counties are sitting with this recreational marijuana ban.
I haven't been able to get that done yet. There was a survey that was sent to us by the Bureau of Cannabis Control that had all that information in it as of November. And so, some county's entry was intend to have an ordinance or not. Looking at that, there were 24 counties that had bans in place. And maybe 10 or 12 that hadn't had anything yet but intended to have bans. I did look around a little bit. I haven't found anybody who's done an updated list. I think maybe a Public Records Act request to the Bureau of Cannabis Control might get something. But, you know, I looked at kind of our comparable counties, you know, Siskiyou, Lassen, Modoc, Bloomis. They're all pretty much bans. You know, Trinity is allowing it. Lake, I think, is allowing it. You know, the Emerald Triangle kind of area is allowing it, but eastern, central and eastern Northern California is mostly banning it.
Banning while they're doing ordinances?
That I don't know.
Because it's my understanding, everybody's in the same situation. They have bans in place, either the temporary one that was allowed by the state, while they put ordinances together. So, now, he's trying to imply that they're permanent bans. And that's not my understanding when I did my research. So, that would be an interesting question.
I think it was, I can't recall now. There were a couple that had interim bans suggesting they're not done. There were some that had permanent bans, but that doesn't mean it's permanent, this will be a permanent ban. I didn't see any language like this, you know, intending to do anything. But then this language isn't, I don't have it arranged that it'd be codified either, you know? So, it's hard to know by looking at people's websites what their intention is. And there's a lot of counties out there to, you know, it's a big time sink.
And I think a lot of my probably thought comes from meeting with these people. You know, we see them, we talk to them, we work with them. So, you know, hearing what they have to say in their boards and what they're doing would lead me to believe that a lot of these bans are in place while they're doing exactly what we're doing. They're trying to put together ordinances that are good for their counties.
I'm sure you have better information than I do.
Thank you. Other supervisors? Mr. Hemmingson?
If I could just, one more thing about fees, not taxes. When the, when the state, like Mr. Erego gets a permit, the state gets those fees, we get no fees?
Right.
So, and we have to do enforcement?
Well, no, we don't have to do enforcement of the state licenses. Now, you know, do we trust that the state is going to enforce those conditions? I don't think we do. And so, if we don't have our own parallel regulations that we can enforce, we're basically trusting the state to basically take the fees, take the taxes, and hopefully live up to the obligation of enforcing. But, you know, I don't know where the nearest Bureau of Cannabis Control office is. I don't know if there's even one on the ballot. There's supposed to be a tax kind of hub somewhere in the Emerald Triangle, so that they can collect money. But where are the people that come and look and check and inspect, I don't know.
Any other comments for Joel at this time or questions? Okay, well, I believe we have an ordinance to either approve or not to approve. Is there any motion at this point from the board?
I'll make that motion to approve the introduction of the ordinance prohibiting commercial cannabis activity by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance, and set the ordinance for adoption at the March 13th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Okay, Kylie, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a statement?
Absolutely, Mr. Berkowitz.
Thank you. Now that we have this ban in place, I'd like to see the cannabis working group in conjunction with the Community Development Department and the County Council to continue working towards the development of an ordinance that can be eventually voted on by the board. To that end, I'd like to see if we can get consensus at the next meeting that we ask the working group to present to the board a report each month on each piece of the ordinance they're working on. Each month, they could handle a different section of the proposed ordinance, like retail one month, transportation, then fees, each month. These pieces could be discussed at the meeting and then voted on as pieces. This would culminate in the final ordinance that could be voted on at the December 2018 meeting. In this way, we could have a definite path to a final vote before the end of the meeting. Now, you may ask, why is this different than the moratorium that we had before? It's because before, we had no measurable objectives laid out at all for the working group for us to review long before the final adoption. With this plan, we do have a definite path to a vote on a monthly basis. And that's why I'm asking for this consensus to be brought up for the next meeting.
Thank you Supervisor.
I believe we had a path.
Just, just for clarity, and you may, may not have missed it when you were on, on the Japan trip, but right now, the working group, until such time as we do have an ordinance for transparency purposes and to ensure that the community is communicated with about board direction and working group progress, they've been asked to report to the board, as you've seen here today and at our last meeting, their progress. So, basically, what you're asking for-
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
What I'm asking is not only a progress report, but something we can vote on each piece, so that we've already made that decision, so we're not blindsided at the end by an ordinance that surprises us.
I, I do believe that was Joel's intent, and I could be wrong about this, but is to take the components that are rolling out of the working group specifically, and I think he just mentioned that one of those, or actually two or three of those at this point, a taxation piece, a retail piece, and a personal grow piece, to piecemeal it. As, basically what you're suggesting, I think that is the direction that we're currently heading. I could be wrong, but Joel, you could please clarify to make sure that I'm understanding you correctly.
Yeah, we talked about it then, but it's a goal with that.
Correct.
But, I think maybe there's a little bit of a difference between the working group drafting an ordinance, sending it to the Planning Commission, and coming here to be voted on. And more, I think what Supervisor Berkowitz might be getting at is the board weighing in before it goes to the Planning Commission and is in ordinance form. Jesse came here and brought up all the elements of the six-plant ordinance. It sounds like maybe Supervisor Berkowitz wants a vote on that each time, before we take it back and draft it. Which honestly, might be very helpful for the working group to know where you are, so we don't take something to Planning Commission that's going to fail. I don't know exactly what the vote would be, you know, because it wouldn't be to enact the ordinance. It would be the vote to maybe keep working on it, to send it to the Planning Commission, to incorporate-
Consensus?
Yeah, maybe, like it's direction to staff each time? Yeah?
I guess Supervisor Berkowitz, I'm just trying to seek some clarity about what that will, what the objective of your motion, or what you're trying to just go along with is, and how it's different than what we're not doing, and so-
Sure. What we're planning on doing is having a report from the cannabis working group. I don't think we're going to have any kind of input from the board on that report. So consequently, with the absence of any kind of consensus of what the board wants, they could go through the entire process, and then basically, we could say, "Well, wait a minute. I'm not sure about this piece, or that piece, or the other piece." Now, we can know and let the cannabis working group and the others know exactly what we will accept. I think that's important, that they need to know where we're going to go with this.
So, then to clarify, and please correct me if I'm wrong, to clarify what you're requesting at this point would be, for instance, at the next report out by the working group, there's a personal, let's say, take personal use for example, and the components that were just laid out by Jesse today, that could potentially be brought before the board, those components laid out, and this board takes some form of action by potentially consensus that says, "This is the board's intent, go forward to the Planning Commission and Community Development. Those decisions be made through environmental review and, and the Community Development. Planning Commission has discussion, their vote, and that vote is then returned to the board." Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Is Jesse still here?
No, he's got frustrated, I'm sorry. You know, when Jesse makes a report, I don't know if there's really an expectation that the board is going to comment, question, challenge the things the working group have worked on. Maybe it would be helpful if there was that expectation.
I think that's contributed to the confusion that we've had all along, where nobody knows where the board stands.
Yeah, I don't think there's ever been any confusion. I think we've got some grandstanding going on here, that's trying to justify irresponsible actions to bring us back to where we're at, or back to square one.
All right, look, we don't need any action for name-calling or anything that's-
I wasn't calling anybody names.
I think we're both basically trying to get to solve a problem. We don't need to bring personalities into this.
Thank you, Supervisors. CAO, do you have any comments to weigh in on a process that could potentially be outlined as Supervisor Berkowitz is suggesting?
I think that the board needs to be cautious in regards to how they would approach giving decisions before the Planning Commission gets a chance to review it. And that was, that would be my first, first reaction without having a lot of time to think about it. But, the process for an ordinance goes through Community Development for land use, goes through the Community Development Department, through the Environmental Review Committee, to the Planning Commission, and then to the board for final decision. All of that is a public process. Giving, giving direction through the receipt of the report from the working group can happen in a give-and-take back between the board. But, I'd be cautious in regards to giving them direction that hasn't yet gone through that process of- that hasn't yet gone through that process of the Planning Commission, because that is under the county's ordinance.
Thank you. Supervisor?
I think we can give broad direction. I think we're just negligent in what we're doing if we don't give the Cannabis Working Group some feedback on what we're thinking. And they need to know that, because they're going to try to draft an ordinance, and they have no clue as what we will accept.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, I think every board member has the opportunity to give input back to Jesse on his reports. There's nothing holding up. You want to come back with consensus as a group? Or do you want to give individual comments from the board? That's, I think every board member should give their individual comments to Jesse so that he can digest those and take those back to the working group.
Think about what that really does. You get five different opinions on what he's doing. What kind of message does that send back to the working group if five individual board members give five different opinions on what he's supposed to do? That's outrageous.
So you're going to meld this all into one idea, even though we've got five different ideas?
Geez, son of a gun, we'd have to make a decision somewhere along the line, don't we?
Well, I think we have. I think if anything outlandish came before us today with Jesse, somebody would have said something. I think, you know, what he said is reasonable. What I've heard in the working groups is reasonable. And I believe that if it wasn't, other than Mr. Gitlin saying he's absolutely against it, you have not heard from us saying we're against it.
You know what, I'd like to speak.
Well, and I'm still speaking, please.
Supervisor Callen, finish, please, thanks.
We're, we've laid out a process, we've all been very open about this process. We had great workshops with back and forth, trying to understand what everybody wants and what is needed. We talked about growth of plants, we've had that conversation. Is it six plants or is it 1,000 square feet? I mean, these are questions that have come up, we've had these conversations. You know, and through those workshops, the working group knows where they're going. Go to a meeting, Bob, they're doing great. And I can't imagine anything so outlandish that's going to come before us that we're going to say, oh, no, I'm more worried what CAO Serena's saying is that we may give them direction that the Planning Commission can't agree upon. I think our time to weigh in, if we have a grave concern, is during Jesse's reports.
Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin, please.
You know, this, listening to these personal attacks, and you said this, and he said that, it's just so unproductive, it's unhelpful. This board is not working well. I didn't hear a year on that December 18th. Is that 2018 we need to come to decision, or December 18th, 2019? Because that's where it's going to go with all this bickering on this board. This is a contentious issue. It's one that's going to change this community one way or the other. I think Supervisor Berkowitz brings a very valid point. We ought to take a subject, and we ought to have all five of us have comments on that subject, whether it's transportation, or in this case, the view on medicinal marijuana and how we can treat that. That would be something that would be productive and move us into an area where the Cannabis Working Group can then get direction on, here's what each of the five members of the Board of Supervisors feel about this particular aspect. If there's five or six or seven subjects, it will be helpful in the communication of information. So I think that's productive.
Well, thank you for your comments, Supervisor.
However the board wants to structure kind of the interaction between the board and the working group is up to the board. You know, if Jesse comes up here and gives an update and says what the board or the working group's thinking, and nobody says anything, you know, is it right for Jesse to assume that everybody's good with it? If that assumption can be made by the working group, then I think that what we're drawing now is fine. I think the working group is always a little hungry for feedback and would like to kind of know where everybody stands so that they know where they're going.
And Joel, I think we could give that feedback at those monthly meetings here when they report out. We could absolutely give that feedback. I don't see why there's any reason why we'd need potentially to take another step that could potentially bypass a process with our Planning Commission, but I could be wrong about that.
Yeah, I don't have strong feelings. You know, I think staff wants to know what the board is thinking. And however the board wants to make that known would be good.
I think the board, at least from a certain respect, and I've heard it today from folks here in the audience, this community has spoken when they voted on Proposition 64. It was very clear. This board has moved in a direction through 2017 to actually go out and seek that public input necessary for those that may agree with certain actions, actions that an ordinance would put in place, or may not agree with what certain actions would go in place through ordinances. But they set a working group in place to ferret out the fine details of what an ordinance may look like. They put that in place, we voted upon it, we did an interim ban, and we're moving forward with that direction, and we're still doing very well. We're hoping that the working group is going to give this board the necessary direction that's going to be literally ferreted out by members of the public who voted on Prop 64 to give this board, through that working group, feedback on what we need to do, because there's a balance on both sides of this. And I could feel the frustration in the audience today, it was very clear. But I ask the folks here in this community to be patient with us. We're going to have something, and we're going to hopefully have it by December 18th, 2018, something that we could all vote on. But we're going to do it in pieces, and a lot of this is going to come sooner than we all think. And the first could potentially be here next month, is my understanding with the personal cultivation. And shortly thereafter, with what addresses Mr. Derigo's concerns with retail. So I'm very confident in the direction that the working group has set in place. I understand some of the frustrations from folks in the audience, but I do believe this board set motion in September last year that direction. It was clear the working group will bring us back, something that we can vote on, to the Planning Commission, something that they can take action on, and we'll come to those agreements. But Mr. Derigo, I appreciate your concerns and frustrations and what that might impact to your licenses, but please be patient with us, we will get there. I do believe that. Thank you. I don't see any reason at this point Supervisor Berkowitz to take any further action. I think at this point, we let the process play out. And if you still feel in maybe a month, month and a half, if that process hasn't played out with what Joel has outlined, I say we reconsider what you're discussing.
Well, I agree. I think that we can trust the board that they will show positive reaction to what's going on with Cannabis Working Group and the County Council and the Community Development Department, so that at least we can give them some direction. And if we're not doing that, that's the decision of the board.
Our voters will let us know if we're not doing that, I guarantee you that, based on what I heard today. Thank you, Joel, for your time.
Thank you.
And the robust discussion we had on this item. At this point, I'd like to take a five-minute recess for those that might need to use the facilities. We'll reconvene at, let's say, 12:40. We're going to go ahead and reconvene here with item number 12, which is approve and authorize ordinance 2018-01, repealing ordinance 97-04 and adopting informal bidding procedures under Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act as requested by Director of the Solid Waste Management Authority. I believe, Mr. Ward, you were here with us today.
Yes, thank you, Chair Howard, members of the Board of Supervisors. This is an ordinance of the Solid Waste Management Authority, and under our bylaws, we're required to have such ordinances that are not directly affecting customer rates be separately approved by the Board of Supervisors and the Crescent City Council before being adopted by the Authority Board. This ordinance simply adopts the Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act as currently being, had been updated, the last time we did this was in 1997. So this enables us, when we have construction projects that are eligible for informal bidding procedures, to follow those informal bidding procedures rather than going through a formal bid. Since we adopted this in 1997, the limits have increased dramatically. So at this point, I believe it's up to, projects up to $175,000, which would really help in terms of the administrative challenge of doing bids for smaller projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Ward at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for approve and authorize ordinance 2018-01, repealing ordinance 97-04, and adopt the informal bidding procedures under Uniform Construction Cost.
Thank you.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second discussion.
Ted, would this revocation of the 97 ordinance and the implementation of the 1801 ordinance enhance the ability to attract more contractors, more bidders? Or would it hamper that process?
For projects that are subject to informal bids, they're of smaller projects that are less likely to attract bidders from outside the area. So they're specifically made a little simpler so that you can call around for prices from qualified contractors and get that. So the long answer is, it would reduce the amount of folks who might potentially bid, but usually those folks wouldn't bother to bid anyway.
Okay, so what's been the history? Have you had the issue with the 97 ordinance that maybe...
Yes, we have, in that the limits are pretty low. And so, for instance, this last time, we did the bid for the transfer station floor repair project, it was both below the $175,000 bid limit, and we only received one bid from well outside the area. I don't anticipate, if we had the different processes, that anything would have changed in that project, except it would have been a little easier to implement from the get-go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Public comment, please.
Wow. I'm all for getting rid of the ordinances. I want to get rid of all of them, period. I worked on that committee for a long time, and as far as I'm concerned, they should all be gone. I think they should be started over. What was presented to the board at one point was that the county should make their own ordinances, the city should make their own ordinances, and then the ordinances that were made by solid waste authority should be done away with. There are ordinances that if you comply with the city, you cannot comply with the solid waste ordinance. Same thing for the county. City has a different set of requirements than the county. Nobody went anywhere with these things. If you want to get a real in-depth blow-by-blow, you can talk to Mary Wilson. I know she's gotten a bad rap on this, and that's a shame on you for doing it. Or should say, shame on the grand jury for doing it. But when you start talking about informal bidding procedures, that smacks of in... Big, I can't even say it, I'm so angry, excuse me. The good old boys' club. We've had, I spoke to contractors, and I've only been here since about 2005, but you're doing some work down on Elk Valley. And I talked to a couple of contractors who said they wouldn't bid. Why? Because there was just too much going on here that they believed that they didn't have a chance anyway. When you start getting rid of informal processes, then you're really going to make this more of a non-competition. It's going to be, the good old boys are going to get the same old thing. And we're going to get the same old thing, the county's going to get the shaft. Other than that, I really don't have much of an opinion on this issue.
Thank you. Other public comment at this time? Okay, seen then, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Mr. Ward, any final comments before we make the vote?
It seems that Ms. Dickey was commenting on some ordinances that were not related to the items we're discussing.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second on the table. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes, all right. We're going to move on to item number 14, which is direct staff to prepare a letter to Charter Spectrum and Northwest Broadcasting urging the companies to diligently negotiate a fair and equitable contract, including a request to Charter Spectrum urging them to compensate subscribers for services paid for and that were not provided. CAO Serena?
I recommended this one on the agenda primarily because of a lot of the comments that came from board members and the public. We received those through administration, and I did hear from other, from supervisors that also had the same theme come into them. And we have been solicited by Charter Spectrum recently. I think all of the board members have heard from a staff member. And as everybody that I've talked to, they really didn't understand that the county no longer is able to negotiate franchise agreements. I've sent that information to all of the board members. That was taken over by the CPUC in 2006. And this would be a step to try to engage those two companies. They are private companies, they're in negotiations, it's up to them to come to an agreement. They are private companies, they're in negotiations, it's up to them to come to an agreement. But to encourage them to do so and then address the issue of services rendered without, during a process where they continue to take subscription compensation. So that was a suggestion. If the board approves that, we'll write that letter and send it out.
Sure. Let's go ahead and open it for discussion amongst the board. Supervisor Gitlin, please.
Yes, thank you, Jay, for that clarification. I'm actually a charter customer, besides being a member of this board. So when I had communications with both parties, Northwest Broadcasting and Charter Spectrum, it was as a private customer expressing my extreme displeasure in these two parties not coming together. But I actually think we're sending the letter to the wrong person. They know that we don't have a voice in this matter. I think we, as a board of supervisors, should send this letter to the Federal Communications Commission and its chairman with a copy to our congressman because the oversight on Charter and its service to our county, and we're one of five areas that were affected by, being affected by this blackout, that would have a far greater impact. Because that is what Spectrum has a fear of. They have a fear of upsetting and going against the wishes of the Federal Communications Commission with a copy to our congressman. That's where the intervention is going to be. So I'd like to see this letter being sent out, but not to the two parties involved, but to, in fact, the FCC.
Other comments from the board at this time? Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Please, across the desk.
Under center. I've been thinking about this. I don't have Charter, but a lot of my friends do. And, you know, when you sign a contract with Charter for a service and then they fail to perform that service, they're in breach of their own contract in my eyes. And I would be, I would like people to know, especially business owners, you might want to take this to small claims court because it was on Friday that they prepared their parties for the Super Bowl, and we didn't get notified till the day before Super Bowl. We weren't gonna get the Super Bowl. They caused harm, injury, financial injury to these businesses and to everybody that was planning to watch the game that day. I would take it to small claims court for everyone. And the only way you're gonna make a loud voice to Charter is if you heard them in their pocketbook. It only takes one case. I don't even know if it's possible, but that's what I would, I would be glad to pay for the filing fee for someone who wants to try it. And they don't have to pay me back. I think it's $50 for a filing fee. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Other public comment at this time? Seen none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion?
If we're gonna expand the letter-writing recipients, maybe we should include the CPUC.
I'd like to comment. I had a conversation with the regulatory analyst on there, and they have no oversight on programming matters. I think it's, you're gonna take an action, will have no effect on it. I think the real recipient of this letter should be the Federal Communications Commission, and that's where there's, action can happen. And this is not a standalone incident. This happens periodically with this carrier, and I think we need to send a letter to the right people for expeditious action.
Thank you. Other comments from the board?
So we don't want to send it to CPUC? I still want to send it to CPUC.
Okay. So other comments from the board at this time? Jay, I think there's a request, and I'm not sure if it's in the form of two letters or one letter, obviously a request for reparations to a certain extent for the loss of service should probably specifically go to Charter Communications. How that's worded, I'm sure staff would come up some great language that would allow the community's frustrations to be expressed. As far as addressing the issue with the Utilities Commission or FPPC, how do you propose to FPCC? How do you propose that to move forward?
Well, based on board direction, you can send a letter to all of them. It'll be the same letter, basically. As far as, you know, the negotiations between two companies, the compensation portion of it, maybe the FCC would be interested in that. You know, the negotiations over the franchises are overseen by the CPUC. So we could send a letter to all of them.
Yeah, and maybe just, maybe that letter is individually addressed to whatever agency, or in this case Charter Spectrum, but the header changes depending on who it's going to, so that they all know that they've been received by the various agencies. So, very good. By consensus, everybody? Very good. We'll move forward. All right. We're gonna move forward with item number 15, which is the State of the County Address. If I could pull that up real quick. We'll get to it in a second. But thank you, Supervisor. No worries. All right. This is something I wanted to do while you guys were gone, but Jay suggested that we wait till you guys get back, so I appreciate you all being here for the State of the County Address. It falls on the chair to do this every year. First, I'd like to thank my fellow supervisors who have endured a challenging year and have stepped up as leaders to bring a voice to Delnar County and to our federal and state legislatures and agencies. It takes strength and fortitude to stand up to the naysayers and those that only wish to degrade others in the name of progress. My hope is that we can continue to make progress on crucial issues and projects affecting the lives of those living and working in our beautiful county. Delnar County has, like many counties, struggled with financial stability for many years, and we anticipate challenges to continue in the future as they affect our legislative decisions by the state and governor, requiring more and more financial commitment by our local government, as well as stress on limited and available local funding. Additional mandates and the effect of new laws will no doubt limit what we can realistically invest in locally. However, Delnar County, with assistance of our partners, has addressed important needs that may not be flashy but are the foundations of the community. Delnar County has experienced changes throughout 2017 that has made our community a better place to live. The reconstruction of Humboldt Road at the intersection of Sand Mine was a collaborative project with the Elk Valley Rancheria that ultimately assisted in traffic congestion and calming in an area that will have future development. Additionally, the Community Development Department, the City of Crescent City, and Elk Valley Rancheria have teamed up to address aging sewer infrastructure and have replaced several lift stations funded through grant money, saving the county service area close to $1 million. The Smith River Rancheria has worked closely with the sheriff to create a position that assists both agencies with law enforcement. This partnership will expand in the future as funding allows for staffing and support that benefit of our community. In addition, the Urock Tribe, also working closely with the sheriff, created a similar position that assists both agencies with law enforcement. Again, this partnership will expand in the future as funding allows for staffing and support. Chairman Howard, Supervisor Hemmingson, and Mara Enscore traveled to Washington DC and met with a number of legislatures and agency personnel, creating relationships and ensuring contacts with those that can make a difference in funding and priorities for Delnar County. I'll note also Supervisor Berkowitz went there on his own dime and made similar comments to strengthen our relationships. Building on the relationships, the county, the city, and the Harbor District will be hearing in the very near future that considerable progress has been made to erase the debt that has been hampering tri-agency. This is a direct result of relationships building at the state and federal level and is a crucial step in bringing additional funding to our community. Collaborative projects with the City of Crescent City on Cooper Street and Harding Avenue have saved taxpayers and demonstrated the resilience of both agencies and the ability of the county and the city to coordinate in the best interest of our community. Our children have shown us through example the importance of relationships with other countries that have shared similar fates through natural disaster by performing a sister schools relationship with Zicata High. They have requested our board and our city council to reach across the Pacific to the city of Ruzus Anticata to form a sister-city relationship. With the board's first visit in February last year and Supervisor Callen and Berkowitz's recent return, we promise to fulfill this wish of our children. The Delnar County Airport has seen important projects be initiated and/or completed. Construction of a terminal required to ensure continued commercial service was initiated in 2017. The project leverages approximately 17...